I call this work session of the San Marcos City Council to order. It is Tuesday, March 7th of 2023. The time is 3:05. Mr. Vina, let's call the roll.
Mr. Prather.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
Mayor Houston.
Here.
Ms. Garza. Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Oh, I'm here.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Mendosa.
Here.
Okay, we go. I'm present. All right. First is our citizen comment period. City council welcomes comments at regular meetings. Persons wishing to speak must have emailed citizencomment@sanmarcosTX.gov prior to noon the day of the meeting. A call-in number and link were provided for those who would need that. Speakers may speak once during citizen comment time period. If someone speaks during citizen comment on a public hearing topic, we ask that you not speak again during the public hearing on the same topic. The timer is displayed on the screen. Ms. Reyes, would you flip the light switch for the back one? Thank you. After you state your name, you have three minutes to speak. When you begin speaking, you'll see that you're in the green on the timer. Wrong ones. When you have 20 seconds left, you'll be in the yellow, and when the timer turns red, your time to speak is up. And, Mr. Vina, I see that we have two people?
That's correct.
All right. First speaker is Lisa Marie Capoletta, and she's going to join us online. If Kelly Frank is here, would you please make your way towards the podium, and you will be second. Ms. Capoletta.
Hi. Good evening, y'all. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta. They call me LMC. I live at 1322 Belvin. And, boy, Kelly Frank, I've known you forever, and that's kind of cool. I wish I was up there. Listen, y'all, when y'all do economic development packages with developers and those in the real estate situation, you guys have multipliers to ascertain if you're going to give private incentives. And, you know, will there be additional jobs, two or more jobs created? I'm sure this is the conversation you're going to have with the smart terminal. In other words, what is the multiplier? And I want to applaud you on creating multipliers when it comes to the Human Services Advisory Board. Actually, I think we need to create multipliers. I want to applaud you on the rubrics that you created. Those were wonderful rubrics. The question is, why has the Human Services Advisory Board followed your sagely wisdom? And many in the community are, were wondering, is this favoritism? Is this peak corruption? Just, it seems like a little sus, is what they're telling me. The video from the meeting is not up for the public to review. I went to the first one where they were supposed to go through your rubrics, and they did not make quorum. And then, of course, the next meeting was attended. I'm a busy lady, y'all, and I missed that one, and I'm very disappointed that I, as a member of the public, was not allowed to review that. I'm shocked that this Melch Center that was actually got the third highest amount awarded, and they were ranked number 37 out of 38, did not meet all the rubrics, and they got the second highest dollar amount, is getting more money than the food bank, is getting more money than our elderly meals-on-wheels program, they're getting more money than the women's shelter, they're getting more money for housing such as Southside Community Center Habitat for Humanity, or the good organization St. Vincent de Paul's. They're getting more money than a proven track record organization for the animals like Pals. They're getting more money than the Hayes Child Protective Services, which protects our youth that have grown up in violent circumstances. And I'm not understanding why their location, alleged location of the office is not at their website, nor is the city seal on their website. They seem to be spending more time traveling and grandstanding in front of protests than actually serving our community. And I would ask you to ask Carol Griffith to tell you how many people they served last year for how much dollar amounts. And I would also ask you guys to update your rubrics, that the individuals should have 60% of their time in office in San Marcos, not a satellite office just for show and just for optics to get the dollar-dollar bills from those of us struggling with our money. City government should be involved. You should be the deciders, and I want to applaud you for your good work of creating those excellent rubrics. Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos. And I got to roll, y'all.
Okay. Ms. Frank, the floor. Go ahead and say something, unless...
It's working now.
Yeah, you're good.
Mayor and city council, thank you for allowing me to be here to make public comment. My name is Kelly Frankie. I'm with Combined Community Action, and we administer the Meals on Wheels program within the city of San Marcos, serving older adults. We have been doing this for over 45 years in the city and providing meals to the seniors. I'm here commenting on the Human Services Advisory Board recommendations for funding. I received an email from Carol Griffith in November of 2022 that stated that our, the recommendation for Meals on Wheels would be $8,250. Our request was for $15,000. We were grateful for the funding recommendation and would, that we would get, but understood other agencies were appealing those original recommendations. We chose not to appeal. We were grateful for the amount that was, was going to be given to us. We also understand that council provided guidance to the advisory board to take another look at the applications. One bullet point specifically stated to prioritize programs which had increased services, increase the number of persons served, have an office in San Marcos, demonstrate the ability to complete the quarterly reports, and have a proven track record. On February 17th of 2023, I received another email that the, of the updated advisory board recommendations. Our allocation had changed from $8,250 to $3,000. To say I was shocked was an understatement. I would like to provide you with some numbers of meals served during 2019, pre-COVID. We were serving 26,276 meals a year to elderly people in San Marcos. In 2020, we served 53,476 meals after COVID started. 2021, we served 56,950 meals. Steadily went up. Instead of serving five meals a week, we began serving seven meals a week, and also serving shelf-stable meals every two weeks that included canned meat, fruits, soups, things like that, to help the seniors through this difficult time. In 2022, we have leveled off the number of meals we served, and we are back to serving the five meals a week since the COVID restrictions have kind of been lifted. And last year, we served over 40,000 meals. The increase in the number of meals served is due to the number of new clients we have been serving since COVID. We have been providing these meals, like I said, over 45 years. We've increased the number of people we served, as well as the number of meals. We completed quarterly reports in previous years. We do have an office in San Marcos at Allenwood Housing Authority, and we pay a nominal fee there to use that space. And we also staged meals from two other sites in San Marcos. We have employees that work here that live in San Marcos, so we do employee residence of the city of San Marcos, and we have many, many volunteers that help get the meals out to the seniors. We have a track record in San Marcos. Services to the older adults is dwindling, but the number of people reaching the age of 60 is increasing every day. Older adults deserve to be seen in the city of San Marcos, and to fund at the original allocation of 82,050, and if possible, to give us a full funding request of 15,000. I appreciate the time you've allowed me to be here today, and I thank you.
Do we have anyone else?
No, ma'am.
Signed up? Okay. So, we will start with item one.
Receive a work session, work session presentation by Chief Standridge and Chief Stevens related to key public safety updates in the public department, in the police department and fire department.
Ms. Reyes.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council, and a wonderful big audience participation today. So, happy to see the council chamber is full right now. It's, it's nice to see people here and interested in your city government, so thanks for being here. Today's work session will begin with updates from our police and fire departments. As part of our shared commitment to enhancing community safety in San Marcos, Chief Standridge and Chief Stevens are providing effective and intentional leadership of their respective departments in alignment with council goals. During his presentation, Chief Standridge will provide timely updates related to the marijuana decriminalization ordinance, violent crime activity in the city, department successes, and staffing concerns and strategies. Similarly, Assistant Chief Carl Coleman and Chief Les Stevens will provide fire department updates related to incident reporting systems, call volume trends, the fire station location plan, and key departmental functions. Before they begin, I want to thank the council for your leadership and support of community safety. I always want to acknowledge the good work being done each week by the staff of these departments and others to enhance safety in San Marcos. I also want to thank Chief Stevens and Chief Standridge for making sure that they really are looking out for a culture of accountability and transparency, and wanting to ensure that we have community dialogue and that we consider all perspectives within our community. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Chief Stevens, Chief Standridge, to actually get us started this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, council, Stan Standridge, police chief. Today is 841 days of my service to the citizens of San Marcos, and I'm very happy to be standing before you. I think it's significant that my bride Beth is here with me, as are a number of our citizens and your entire police command staff. And I have one clear and compelling message, and that is that we are forward-looking and thinking, and we are absolutely positive about the steps that we have taken to address the past. We are better today. We are more accountable today. We are more effective today. When I came here, everybody said, "We want better." And to my staff, I think you have done remarkably well in the last 841 days. I'm incredibly proud of the men and women sworn and civilian who stand with me today to talk to you. Personally, I'm excited about the future of the city of San Marcos and your police department. So, I'm going to endeavor to give you a pretty holistic glimpse. We're going to start with the marijuana decriminalization update, and we're going to start that because by ordinance, I am required to give you an update on behalf of the city manager. We're going to also talk about some celebrating successes. Today, you received the 2022 annual report, what I, what I like to call the year-end review. Mr. Tammy Strachus, Ms. Martha Schumchild right behind me, these two worked weeks to make that possible. Excellent job. That will be provided to our citizens hopefully sometime today or tomorrow. That went to the communications team just a little while ago, and so our citizens will get a chance to get an in-depth look at the police department in 2022 and us looking forward to 2023. We will also talk briefly about our North Star. We're going to talk about violent crime update. We're going to keep the main thing the main thing. We're going to talk about staffing updates and concerns. I know a couple of weeks ago, Chief Staff mentioned those. We talked about a few of those. I'll unpack a little bit of it as it relates to the sworn side, but also our dispatch, our telecommunications side. And then we'll look at 2023 strategies and considerations. So moving into the marijuana decriminalization. This is an ordinance that was adopted, codified in Section 54.105, and this specific provision requires that we provide updates, and the purpose of this is to provide you an update as it relates to this ordinance. Within three months of the adoption of this ordinance, and every three months thereafter, the city manager or their designee, that would probably be me, shall present to the city council at a public meeting subject to the Texas Open Meetings Act a report concerning the city's implementation of this ordinance. Okay. First of all, please know that the ordinance enjoined upon the city to adopt a policy regulating the enforcement thereof pursuant to the law. However, the ordinance did not contemplate a conflicting statute, which I have provided, but for the benefit of our citizens, I'm going to reference this. In the Texas Local Government Code, Section 370.003, it specifically says, "The governing body of a municipality, the commissioner's court of a county, or a sheriff, municipal police department, municipal attorney, county attorney, district attorney, or criminal district attorney may not adopt a policy under which the entity will not fully enforce laws relating to drugs, including Chapters 481 and 483, Health and Safety Code, and federal law." So, point advice, advice from council, from legal council with the city attorney's office, we did not adopt a policy governing this specific ordinance. Instead, we communicated a memorandum. We communicated the memorandum to all police personnel on November 22nd. The ordinance went into effect on November 17th of 2022. I also want to give you a brief update. You probably knew that the then district attorney, Wes Mao, had requested an opinion from the attorney general as it relates to the constitutionality of this marijuana ordinance. I contacted the current district attorney, Mr. Kelly Higgins, and asked him if he could give me an update on the status, and I learned from him that he actually requested from the AG's office that the request be dropped. So to my knowledge, there is no outstanding AG request for an opinion from the city of San Marcos, Hayes County District Attorney's Office, et cetera. So what have we done with this ordinance? Again, since ordinance adoption, November 17th to February 28th, when we began compiling all these stats, we have charged two people with possession of marijuana beyond failure to appear warrants. I want to provide a clear caveat. There are many more people in the Hayes County jail on POM, possession of marijuana, but they all stem from arrest warrants. And pursuant to the code of criminal procedure, we shall make an arrest on arrest warrants, and so those persons. But this is an organic charge that stems from an investigation on the streets of San Marcos, and it resulted in two people being arrested with possession of marijuana. I provided you some context as to why these two people were arrested, because perceivably it would violate the ordinance that was passed. On the first one, the person was also charged with manufacturing, delivery, controlled substance penalty group one. To give you an example of what penalty group one can be inclusive of, that would be meth, heroin, fentanyl, those types of drugs. So the person that was arrested was also charged with Class B possession of marijuana, but also with penalty group one. The ordinance allows that. The second one was charged with driving wire license invalid and enhanced charge, meaning the person had had that charge on numerous occasions, and so because there was a co-occurring charge, the possession of marijuana could also be charged without violating the ordinance. The ordinance also stipulates that we cannot issue possession of drug paraphernalia charges, which is a Class C municipal ticket, in lieu of making an arrest for possession of marijuana. So Chief Winkin ordered, did all the research on this in conjunction with municipal court, and we found out that we have charged six people with possession of drug paraphernalia. Five of those six had meth pipes, to give you an example of what we're dealing with. So, that's really as it relates to marijuana decriminalization. Do you have any questions before I actually get into the, the highlight on public safety? Because those are kind of two unrelated topics.
No real direction we're giving today. No real direction we're giving today. You're just giving us an update?
Correct.
And maybe just to make a statement on it. I know this is, I use the word tricky, right? The feds say it's illegal. Many states have it where it is legal. San Marcos has its own thing that we're doing that's different than the state. So there's all these just overlapping, conflicting laws. And I wish our policymakers and lawmakers way up the food chain, up the feds, state, would address this, issue more head-on versus this patch, patchwork approach across the nation. It's just, like I said, the best way I can describe it. Tricky.
And I have a question, and that is Texas State University, that has their own police force, and also we have the county, the sheriff's department. Are they doing anything different from what they used to do?
To my knowledge, no. They have not adopted anything similar to our ordinance.
That's what I thought, and I was looking for confirmation of that. Thank you. Ms. Garza has her hand up, online.
Yeah. So, am I understanding this correctly, that you did not pursue a written policy per se, but in practice, y'all are kind of enacting like the spirit of the ordinance, or?
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate your question. So, early on, Chief Staff and I consulted with city legal and asked, once we realized the conflict with state statute as, codified in 370 that I shared earlier, the council was that we do not need to adopt an administrative directive or policy, but instead labeled this as a memorandum to provide direction to sworn staff. And so that's exactly what we did. I have a three-page memorandum that was disseminated to all police personnel on November 22nd. It specifies what the ordinance says, and then it specifies our response, our custom, and our procedure moving forward.
Gotcha. Yeah, I appreciate that. I, I asked staff to send that over, but I, I've had a chaotic couple of days. I haven't been able to look at it very thoroughly, so, okay. Thank you.
We can resend it to mayor and council to put it back at the top of your inbox if you need it.
Oh, no, no, no. I, I think I got it like yesterday, so it's, it's there.
Okay. All right. I have a long presentation.
Hold on, Mr. Standridge. I have a question. Is it, is it possible for the city council to wield that idea, to get that opinion from the AG?
No, sir. The actual statute specifies who can request an opinion from the Texas Attorney General, and by statute, city council cannot, but I'll defer to Ms. Barbara Quirk for further.
Not even our legal?
No.
There, there is not a provision that allows us to ask for an opinion from the attorney general on this, and I can work with the mayor on other options that we might have in the future.
Okay. Shane, we need you on camera, please.
Yeah, I can't right now, mayor. Sorry.
All right. Do you have anything else?
No, ma'am. That was it.
Okay. Please continue, chief.
All right. Celebrating success. Community outreach. Blue Santa celebrated its 50th year. It's the longest-standing community engagement from the San Marcos Police Department, and we provided some statistics, but for the benefit of our citizens in the council chambers, they reached 357 families and 926 children. LaRae Taylor is simply fantastic, as are Blue Santa, but he could not do this without the wealth of volunteers. Also have pointed out the behavioral advisory team. Chief Staff and I serve on the behavioral advisory team. You, we're going to hear a whole lot more about this. This is about 20 stakeholders from across the county, wherein we are serving as a public policy information advisory panel to inform mental health services. We have had our second meeting, and already I look forward to what we're going to be able to do as it relates to mental health. The homeless outreach team, phenomenal job. We recognized officers Luke Willdig and Chad Philippi recently. In fact, we gave them distinguished service awards for what they are doing for our homeless neighbors, our vulnerable neighbors, making a remarkable job. Also wanted to just point out, this is not in your slideshow, but post-Robb Elementary, I'm referring to the school shooting in Uvalde, your officers were under, correction, were on all campuses for not days, for weeks, but in perpetuity. Commander Rich Mazan, and thank you for helping coordinate the safety of our schools. So that is, again, community engagement. And then we also had a phenomenal success with the catalytic converter etching that was overseen by Commander Eric Spiegel, Criminal Investigations. We had a, we had so many people turn up, we had to turn people away. We presented 10 distinguished service awards. We presented 10 life-saving medals, and I gave you three examples, one of which was dispatcher Jessica Robinson. She was credited with a lifesave on April 18th of 2022 for applying a tourniquet via the phone. Can you imagine the difficulty therein? And it was a makeshift tourniquet, because a woman had a shard of glass about three feet that cut almost halfway into her hand. So she would have bled to death had they not done some type of improvisation. So Jessica was able to talk them through a makeshift tourniquet and ultimately saved her life. I gave you several others on there. We gave community partnership awards, some of whom are in this room. Kissing Tree backs the blue. Thank you for your support. I just want to quit, do a quick shout-out. Our community volunteer, Charlotte Lund, has coordinated 2,200 hours of volunteer service time. 2,200 hours. Phenomenal. We had a record-breaking year in 2022 as it relates to internal training. We had the most classes in a decade. We had 221 classes, and I gave you just a brief snapshot. Incident command, trauma medical aid, active attack rescue task forces. I can't praise Chief Stevens enough. We are now working on integration between police, fire, and EMS if we have to respond to an active attack. We have made remarkable strides just in the last two years, so thank you for your leadership, chief. And then active bystandership for law enforcement, that's a class that will exist for perpetuity because we're always talking about their necessity to intervene. Don't forget that it was codified in state law. We had 1,631 students, 10,000 class hours. Just a quick update for your knowledge, you have 46 master peace officers. What does that mean? That's the highest level classification a peace officer can attain in the state of Texas. You have 46 of them. You have 15 advanced, one step below, and you have 17 intermediate peace officers. Now, we're becoming a young department. You all know that as well as I know that, but to retain that number of well-qualified veterans is a testament to the city. It's a testament to where we can go in 2023. It's a testament to have any positive forward narrative. So let's point to progress. We have made significant progress in pursuit of accreditation and accountability. You've heard of this concept of accreditation ever since I got here. We hit a hiccup. It's the renovation. It's specifically the renovation in property and evidence. So we literally, I think, quadrupled, Chief Clatt, quadrupled the size of our property and evidence because we have tens of thousands of items in storage, and we just continue to amass more, almost 4,000 annually. You have to have places. So we now have those places, but the problem is, once you have the spaces, you have to have the shelving, you have to have all the other things. So because that is still ongoing, still ongoing, we could not pass an onsite inspection right now. So we've got to get through property and evidence, finish that renovation completely before we can do our onsite. So Chief Bob Clatt oversees the accreditation. Our North Star. A North Star has been described as an unwavering definition of purpose to ensure movement in the right direction, and that's the only way we are going to go. We are going to give our best to our community, to our department, to our families, and to ourselves. And BEST is an acronym, because you can't exist in policing without an acronym. BEST stands for Better Every Day, Stronger Together. That is our North Star that's going to guide everything we're going to do in 2023. So let's look back a year in view. 2022 Use of Force Report. I really want to highlight this slide. Why? We had 65,500 contacts with our citizens, and we used force 0.09% or 59 times. Because I don't know about you, but I think that's a positive report card. I would love to see zero. The problem is, the number of officers injured in 2022 jumped dramatically. Why? Because the resistance we've received increased dramatically in 2022. In 2021, you had 7% of your officers injured. Last year, you had 24% of them injured. So pursuits. In 2021, we radically changed the pursuit policy. We basically said, "We're going to pursue for things that have some context of trying to prevent serious bodily injury or death." If it's a property-related crime, we're probably not going to pursue. So we have a very conservative pursuit policy. So you can see that in, I can't even see the dark number, in 2019, we had 23. Last year, we had nine. This is in the right direction. We now pursue for the right things and not for all things. We talk a lot internally about the need versus the risk. What is the need to apprehend, apprehend the person who's fleeing versus the risk to everybody else on the streets to include us? And so right now, Councilman Prather, I want you to put your wife, your kiddo, in a car out there on the streets. To what extent do you want your San Marcos Police Department weighing the need to pursue when they're coming from the opposite direction? That's the things that we are weighing. What is the need versus the risk to everybody else to include the peace officers? And oh, by the way, more good news. We have fewer crashes. When I say crashes, I'm talking about San Marcos Police Department fleet crashes, not our citizens. We're still working on that number. But as it relates... But as it relates to the police department, we had fewer fleet crashes. We actually had a 16% reduction. You can see of this, I'll, I'll give you the specific numbers for the benefit of the audience. In 2022, we had 36 versus the year prior, we had 43. Commander Tiffany Williams, she's also in the audience today. She oversees your event review board. The event review board is a board comprised of SMPD and your risk manager, risk manager for the city of San Marcos. And they review every use of force, every pursuit, every crash, every significant event or injury. And they're meeting, if not every month, several times a month, to review all of these. What are they doing? They're looking for, first and foremost, did we do something that's commendable? Let's recognize the things that we're doing right. Secondly, if we didn't do it well, were there policy violations? If so, this need to be referred to police administration. They also evaluate, do we have a good policy? Does a policy need to be tweaked? So they're vetting all of those, and it's a very busy committee as we continue this internal culture of accountability. You can see the numbers, the numbers are the evidence. That's what we teach in our field. The numbers would suggest that we are doing remarkably better in spite of some of the narrative that exists within the community. So what I want to say is, we are positive internally. I want to tell our citizens today that we are excited about 2023 and all the things that encompasses.
Chief, Ms. Garza has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
No, you're okay. Um, so regarding the, you just mentioned the committee, I don't remember what it was called. Um, the, and you said that they determined like whether it's a good policy, da-da-da-da. Um, I'm remembering, remembering another conversation we had as a group, um, where we were questioning what constitutes like a use of force? And like what, um, like bystanders, so like another police officer witnessing like a use of force? Um, like how does that get categorized or like how do we, how do we hold that accountable? How, how do we hold that accountable? And, um, on my notes, I specifically asked to see like, I think there's like a checklist or something or like a form that's filled out? Um, where it kind of like, is this use of force or not? Is there any way we could see that? Um, I'm curious to, to, to look at that.
You're specifically asking, do we have a use of force reporting form? And the answer is yes, and yes, we can provide that.
Right.
And I'd remind you.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, and the policy that we use to govern our use of force decision-making was the policy adopted ultimately by, I remember the citizen-initiated committee that you all helped appoint. And then I came here and we actually codified that policy in 2021. So it was actually community-initiated, driven, and ultimately presented to council. That's our policy that governs use of force to this day.
Okay, cool. And, um, so whenever there's like, um, somebody who may be perceived to be, um, I guess, conducting or like using force, and there's like another officer present, um, do they have, in this, I guess, um, policy, do they have responsibility to report or do they get reprimanded if they don't report that?
So remember when I said just a second ago that it's actually codified in law, there's a state law that now mandates intervention by peace officers. It's also in our policy. And so Councilwoman Garza, that's what I was talking about with ABLE. ABLE is an acronym that stands for Active Bystandership for Law Enforcement. And that's where the officers are trained, not only on the state statute, but actually on our policies.
Okay, so then there, it's codified by law that they have to like report it or something, is that what you're saying?
Well, they have to intervene and report, correct?
Thank you.
Chief.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Councilman Garza, if I could clarify that, I think you're asking, um, if an, if an officer who witnesses a routine use of force has to file a report as a witness, but it's only if they perceive that as unreasonable force?
Hmm. Yes, thank you.
Okay.
That, that's, that's what I was trying to ask. Thank you very much. Um, I appreciate that, Chase.
And there are.
Uh, Mr. Stapp, sorry.
And there are those, those two separate processes and those two separate forms that we can provide. One is the ABLE form. If there was something that was perceived as a necessary use of force, and then there's also the use of force just reporting form. So we can, we can provide both of those forms to council so that you can see what those look like.
Point of clarification, there, there's not an ABLE form.
There's not an ABLE form, okay.
If, if the officer perceives that, hey, this, this was probably, uh, could possibly misconduct, they're required to draft a memorandum and send it to their supervisor.
Okay.
Right.
So that, that, that's the process for reporting that. It's more of a memorandum versus a form that has to be filled out with consistent information. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and then I guess, I guess a follow-up for that is, I'm thinking of one situation in particular. Like they see it, maybe they don't perceive it, maybe they don't report it, but then it turns out that it was a use of force by somebody that they're like working alongside or their partner. Is there like professional development or training to kind of help them, like, um, kind of walk them through why the, their, their partner or whoever they showed up on the scene with, like why they, um, it was deemed that it was a use of force and like how, how they can better identify that so that they do report it? Does that make sense?
Well, you, you actually started your question with if they don't see it, and then do we have.
No, no, I'm sorry. If they, I didn't mean that like that, sorry. Like if they see it and they don't report it, but then it turns out that the other officer, like, it was found out that he did use force, he or she used force. Is there something to help, um, empower that other officer with the, with the lens to be able to better like, um, recognize use of force, I guess?
So the simplest way to answer that question is, the use of force is going to be reviewed by the event review board. If the event review board looks at that and recognizes that Houston, we have a problem, so to speak, it's going to be referred to Internal Affairs. Internal Affairs is going to conduct a Class 1 investigation, and all the officers are going to be interviewed, and ultimately, we're going to take statements from everybody. So I'm, I'm just going to point out the elephant in the room. There's frustration, you know, that we, we keep hearing about this, this misconduct historically. Well, if we're going to be held accountable, and we're going to be at an accountable department, then you're going to have to expect us to hold people accountable, which then becomes public record. We can't have it both ways. We can't have no record releases without accountability because we're going to make mistakes. You employ humans, you employ me. We're going to make mistakes. We're going to sometimes get it wrong. When we do, we're going to have a high level of accountability as evidenced by, that's why you're getting all of this media feedback. But my encouragement, my encouragement to all of us is, the day that police misconduct stops making the news, that's when I'm tapping out. Because that means it's so commonplace, it's no longer newsworthy. It's still newsworthy in the city of San Marcos because they and you expect a high level of accountability. And you're getting it. You're getting it. So. Anyways, I digress.
No, no, no. This is, this is really helpful. Um, I appreciate, I appreciate that.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to see.
All right, turn on your microphone. No. That one. Even though we're zooming, we use these microphones. It's confusing.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is.
Turn the other one off.
There we go.
There we go.
My question is, if an officer uses a taser, is that considered use of force?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I gave you the SWAT callouts, um, which is to give you an idea of how busy they are. Keep in mind, this is a Hays County team, so it's a multi-agency team. They had 37 operations involving 2,352 hours, which is inclusive of their training hours as well. So, let's talk about keeping the main thing the main thing. Violent crime, correction, violent crime continues to climb, but I love the but part. That's the most key word in that hanging sentence. Mr. Tammy would be upset with my hanging sentence, but it's purposeful. All right, so let's talk about the tenure of violent crime as it relates to, that's a, that's a lot of information right there, and I apologize to our citizens in the audience. It's, it's a whole lot of information. What you are looking at on the left, what I will call the Y-axis, are the aggregate numbers of violent offenses. So as an example, the far left is the year 2012, and you can see we had about 600 violent offenses.
Wait.
Okay. And then you can go all the way up to 2022, and you can see that we had nearly 1,600 violent offenses. So the left is the aggregate number, total number. The bottom obviously are the years. The top jagged line, I'm going to call that gold, orange, whatever Martha colored that, that is your population increase. You can see that the population increase is somewhat steady in contrast to the violent crime increase from 2018. So let me draw your attention. For my audience members, 2018 is one just right of the center one. From 2018, you have almost a vertical climb with violent crime. So I've told you before, in the last five years, you've had a 52% increase in violent crime. Now, Mayor, you have asked, and correctly so, but we've had a subsequent increase in population. So Martha has taken that a step further and done some further, further data extrapolation. But before I get to what she's giving you, I want to point out two things on this slide. Notice that in 2022, our violent crime actually caught up to our increase in population. That's not a good thing. When there's a collision, that means that our violent crime has risen to the point where if we don't do something different in 2023, we're going to eclipse our population increase. I also want to point out the dark blue line towards the bottom. That is actually representative of your staffing levels. Your staffing levels in 2012 to 2022, commensurate to population, have actually decreased. What does that mean? You have fewer officers per capita than you did in 2012. So let's break it down just a step further. In 2012, you had 16, 613 violent offenses. It grew to 1,541. That is 151% increase. Your census population, based on 2021 number for 2022, grew by 42%. Your sworn staffing grew by 19%. We shouldn't see such a large delta between those percentages. So it tells us that we've got to grow the popu, correction, the, the departmental size commensurate to the population increase, which is not new to anybody in this room. But then Martha took it a step further because remember the vertical climb really took off in 2018? And Martha correctly pointed out that we had a 77% increase in those few years since 2018. With only a 6% increase in population and a 6% increase in officer strength. So we need to make some strides there, and we'll talk about that at the end of this presentation.
Do you have a question? Uh, Mr. Gleason?
Yeah, it's not so much a question, but just for the public's sake, if you would classify, or what is classified as a violent offense?
Sure. That's a great question. Murder, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, kidnapping, some firearms violations like deadly conduct. I know Patty is looking at me thinking, how can you not get all of this right right now? Uh, but it would be inclusive of those. I typically focus on murder, rape, robbery, aggravated assault. I will tell you all the time that aggravated assault is your best predictor of violence in your community. Murders are typically associated with drug abuse, drug violence, or family violence. So, so hard to mitigate. Aggravated assaults, on the other hand, are where one citizen tries to kill another citizen. You had well over 200-plus aggravated assaults last year. That means 200 citizens tried to kill another 200 citizens in the course of one year. That's the best predictor of violent crime.
Thanks, Chief.
Mr. Prather.
I remember, uh, the end of last year, you gave us a presentation. Um, you know, there were some key takeaways, very concerning with the, the violent crime increase. Um, but one of the things you were mentioning, though, it was towards the end of the year, that there wasn't any murders in that year, and that you're, y'all were taking a, um, a, a different approach, you know, cops on dots, you know, about where, where there's increase in crime, where we're going to put people, you know, all these different strategies. And, you know, you're pretty confident, you know, that we will finish the year without a murder, and congratulations on that. Uh, but also, from what I recall, may, maybe it was the last few months that, well, the crime rates stopped rising, but it was starting to head in the right direction with these new strategies?
Yeah, so, and, and Martha actually sensitized me to this. If you look at the increases in violent crime, they were typically double digits. Between 2021 and 2022, when we adopted intelligence-led policing, that's the big umbrella.
Yeah.
And when we adopted that, we got that delta down to 8%. So in other words, we are slowing, we are, to use cop parlance, we're arresting the rate of increase. That's good news. I'll say that again. Because of the efforts from the citizens, from the mayor and council, and from your police department, we are doing things proactively, and we're doing things remarkably differently. It's actually starting to arrest the rate of increase of violent crime. We have not seen it go down yet. Let me be here next year and say it did go down in 2023. But Councilman Prather, I forgot to yell this from the rooftop. We had zero murders in all of 2022. Zero. That has not happened since 2014? 2014. Hasn't happened since 2014. I expected an applause, but that's okay. Too late, too late. It was solicited at that point. All right.
Chief, Ms. Garza has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so, um, I don't know if this is the right point in the, in the presentation or not, but I think we can all agree that the root causes of crime are, are super complex, right? And, um, all this data is really helpful to see kind of what resources we have in terms of people power. But I'm wondering of, of, if aside from assessing the police officer-to-population ratio, um, what's, um, San Marcos PD is looking at in terms of, um, ways to like disrupt the conditions leading to crime? Or programs that like are kind of rethinking, um, how, how to engage the community or how to creatively address, um, preventing crime? Um, so like violence interruption programs, um, and so on and so forth?
Uh, Councilwoman Garza, it's a great question. It's, it's a fair question, and my response is, we are so busy right now trying to arrest the crime rate that we are, we're not even close to where you want us to be. And so my, my message to all of you is, if it's in fact a community issue, then community is going to have to also step up. And I think they have. And so I don't also want to point out that we're not doing anything. As an example, we work collaboratively really closely with, um, Hayes Caldwell Women's Center as an example, where we try to mitigate family violence. That's just one arena. So it is occurring, but it's not occurring to the rate we need it to because we operated all of 2022 with 18% reduction in our workforce. Think about that. 18% of our employees were gone. We'll talk about that in a minute. So we have an increase in violent crime, still 8%, 18% less employees to respond. So right now, Councilwoman Garza, we're hanging on to our seats, trying to combat some of this. And it's showing that it's working, but if anything, I would say this is a plea to the community. We've got to do more in 2023 if we want different results.
Chief, one thing I think. I'm sorry, Ms. Garza, one thing that I think is pertinent to your question is the work that you all are doing in the areas of mental health, and you've made a lot of progress.
Yeah, that's a real good point. That behavioral advisory team is going to inform, they can't set policy. They're going to inform public policy as it relates to how we deal with mental health crisis. So another positive takeaway, y'all remember this, we now have an embedded mental health clinician with your officers on the mental health unit. Folks, those types of things are recurring. So Chief Staff, thanks for that.
Right, no. And I appreciate that. I think they're, they're necessary, um, and just like holistic approaches. Um, I'll just read this real quick. Like by misidentifying the catalyst behind crime patterns, we lose our ability to diagnose the proper ailment and administer the correct medicine. So while I hear and I see that you guys are hanging on for dear life, trying to work with what you have, and trying to basically, you know, I don't, um, tackle on like, how do we address this? How do we stop this? Da-da-da-da-da. I think it's just important for us as a council to also understand like, um, that we have to, um, help either engage the community or just like, um, um, emphasize and prioritize that while all this other stuff is happening, which is necessary, that, um, our leaders in the police department need to also be, um, devoting time to understand the crime patterns, right? So if we want to apply the appropriate interventions, like we have to, uh, allow space for that to happen or make space for that to happen, right? Um, so that this is all, this is all really helpful to kind of understand that.
Yes, ma'am. All right. I promised Chief Stevens that I'm not almost done. All right. Property crime. Great news on property crime. Property crime is not. Property crime is not catching up to the percentage increase in population. It's still going the wrong direction. There was an eleven percent increase in property crime. Our biggest property crime issues, folks, are along the I-35 corridor at restaurants and hotels because people are leaving incredible values in their vehicles. A locked car is no longer a deterrent. They'll punch your lock, they'll break your window, they will steal your firearms. We had more than twenty-plus firearms stolen in two thousand and twenty-two. If we want to do different, we gotta stop doing those kinds of things. And the problem is, you can tell Sam Markins that all day long, it's not they who are doing this, it's the people who are commuting to and from on 35 corridor. But property, somewhat encouraging, we just need to turn this thing around. All right, let's discuss staffing. We received over eighty-four thousand calls for service in two thousand and twenty-two. Martha provided a note that those calls for service actually lead to services rendered by your police officers. We had a total calls to non-emergency, eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-five. Total calls to nine-one-one emergency, forty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-two calls to nine-one-one. And oh, by the way, we typically have four people on duty. Our telecommunicators, under the leadership of Audrey Verver, I don't know if she's in here, she may be in the back room, you have an exceptional manager. Audrey provides remarkable leadership, as does Karen. They are hugely busy, and oh, by the way, they're about an average forty-four percent reduction in workforce because of staffing shortages. So look at those numbers again, and they're doing it without forty-four percent of their employees. So now, the good news is, council worked with the city, we addressed salary to retain these employees. We have started the retention at a much higher rate. We don't have, we're not bleeding, we're not losing people like we were previously. So thank you for those efforts. Now we just need to continue to work on hiring new employees. Total number of arrests, we're down. There's not a specific message here, other than I just want you to know that the delta is four percent change. There are many factors involved in that. But I have told the council all along that an arrest is not indicative of success. An arrest is simply one piece of, like Councilwoman Garza said, a social, a social issue. Disturbing trends? We had road rages creep up in two thousand and twenty-two, so much so, I'll give you some examples. In two thousand and twenty-one, there were thirteen incidents reported, but by February eighth, we already had eight road rage incidents on I-35 where people were actually shooting each other because they were so mad at each other on the interstate. So I talked to Patty this week, in fact, to better understand this data, and she said we really saw two spikes. The first spike lasted through May, and then the, correction, through March, and then the second spike was April-May timeframe. We were aggressively dealing with that. Do y'all remember seeing these cars on the interstate that may or may not have been occupied? To you citizens, they were absolutely occupied, they were running radar. But those cars may or may not have been occupied. All of that was part of intelligence-led policing to reduce the numbers, and that proactive strategy worked because after May, the numbers dropped, according to Patty. I told you about the stolen firearms? Oh, yeah, I was completely wrong. I said twenty-plus. Look at that number, eighty-five firearms stolen. Exclamation point, eighty-five firearms stolen. To our citizens, we have to do different. And then you all know a lot about the fentanyl. We had four fatal overdoses in our city alone, over fifty-plus in Hayes County.
Ms. Gleason?
Yeah, thanks, Chief. When you were, when you were stating that twenty-two stolen firearms were, I feared you meant 35 corridor because I had seen the eighty-five number. Do you know, do you have a breakdown of approximately how many of those came from the I-35 corridor, or how many of those came from residences around the community of the eighty-five?
I don't, but my, my brain Patty probably does. I don't, I apologize.
We can just have that data, too.
You bet, we'll get it to you. Two thousand and twenty-two crime trends, violent. You saw that we had a twenty percent increase, but again, the positive of this slide is the fact that the year previous, we had a double-digit increase. We started to arrest that rate of climb, so we had an eight percent increase. So I'm going to say that that's a victory coupled with zero homicides last year. This is property, again, is eleven percent increase. All right, so what are we doing to reduce crime? If you all remember that we talked about this a lot, we actually changed the name. Mayor, I apologize for being tricky on you, but we didn't like the first name. Stan had named it the first time. My staff said, that's goofy, let's come up with CARE. They're smarter than me, so we came up with the collaborative approaches to a resilient environment. I loved it. It was an initiative in two thousand and twenty-one. If you all recall, we scrubbed every homicide for ten years. We scrubbed every robbery for five years. We scrubbed every aggravated assault for two years. And we crunched the data to see what the data actually told us. In that data, we learned that twenty-nine-point-three percent of the time, the offenders were coming into San Marcos to offend related to violent crime. So because of that, we were able to implement a lot of different things. So some of those things are inclusive of intelligence-led policing. You've heard us talk about D-DAX, Data-Driven Approach to Crime and Traffic Safety. That's the cops on dots that Councilman Prather referred to earlier. The, the logic is simple. Wherever you have traffic crashes, wherever you have crime, are probably going to be overlaid. So why not put an officer there, officer there doing some proactive work to prevent both? We also have the Crime Reduction Unit. Remember, we re-tasked the downtown unit and gave them additional responsibilities. We have the Violent Criminal Apprehension Team. That's an organic effort that came up within Criminal Investigations Division. That's not Stan's brainchild. This was organic to the creativity of your team in SMPD. Increased efforts for community collaboration, and we invested in technology. And when I say we did, we did. Thanks to our interim city manager, now thankfully, our city manager, Ms. Stephanie Reyes. I've told you this before, but for the benefit of our citizens, I've never had a city council member, correction, a city manager tell me, you are authorized to overspend your budget because this has to be done. I won't tell you how much she authorized. It was not a hundred and nine thousand, for the record. I had some money, but we are ultimately, because of that effort, and that's why you don't have a double-digit increase in violent crime. It worked. We are leveraging technology. And I don't have enough time to go through all of those. Chief Stevens is going to break my kneecap. All right, staffing updates and concerns? I'm almost done, chief. All right, officers, two thousand and twenty-two, we are authorized, one hundred and fifteen authorized officers, that is inclusive of the two assistant chiefs, but not inclusive of me. So authorized total sworn strength is one sixteen. We had eleven new hires last year, six retirements, four resignations, so we had a net gain of one. So we finished the year with an average officer vacancy of eighteen percent. Dispatch, as I said earlier, they have twenty-eight floor positions. Fifteen are really doing the work because they completed training. They still have four in training, they have eight vacancies, and we had to freeze one to freeze up money to address salary and compensation. They are working with a forty-three percent average vacancy. So that's something that we all need to be really intentional in two thousand and twenty-three if we want something different.
Chief, Ms. Garza has a question.
Hi, um, okay, let me, let me go over here. So I appreciate the data crunching and assessing of crime trends that you just described. I think it's super helpful to see the findings and how y'all have been proactive in addressing that. Like, for example, the findings that folks are coming in from elsewhere and committing crime and how you guys have reacted to that, I think that that's really helpful and impressive. But back to my earlier question, what do you need, like as a chief, to be able to work towards what I mentioned earlier? So understanding the conditions leading to crime and how we can invest in like solutions that more, I guess, further address crime prevention instead of like merely reacting to it? So one example is, the first year I was elected to, I'm almost done with my term, I brought up programming such as like violence interrupters and other community programs aimed at reducing or preventing violence. And so just with that in mind, like what, what do you need as a chief to be able to find the time or have the capacity to kind of dig into those type of interventions?
So I appreciate you, you've kind of rephrased the question at the end because your first question was, what do I need to understand what the conditions that are leading to crime? Please know that-
I guess us understand, right?
Okay, so you hit the nail on the head. We've got to have the time and the resources to do different if we're going to do different. Right now, folks, with eighteen percent and forty-three percent and an increasing workload, violent crimes up eight, property crimes up eleven, so you're doing more because your population's increased and you're doing it with less. At some point, we're going to have to do something different, and so that's actually what I'm going to get to. So Councilwoman Garza, can we put that in the parking lot for a second? Because it's going to be towards the end of the slide. It's a good question.
Yes, sir.
All right. So functional vacancies, we've talked about that a lot. Chief Staff explained that two weeks ago. But a functional vacancy occurs when we hire somebody, but they're still in the training pipeline. So we currently have six in field training, which is twenty weeks long. We have seven in a basic academy, which is six months long, followed by a six-week mini academy, followed by twenty weeks of field training officer program. We have two out on FMLA. And then, oh, great news slash tough news, we have five expectations associated with newborns. Those, yeah, I know, you want to applaud, you're like, ah!
Young department?
Yes, so it's tough. All right. The onboarding timelines, I'm not going to spend a lot of time here. Officers can take up to two years. Our dispatchers, I can't brag about them enough. By the way, I think April is telecommunications week. Let's do a really good job collectively as a, as a whole city of recognizing them. It takes over five months for certification. And by the way, they are licensed by the state of Texas. This is not just a job, it's a profession. So looking ahead to Councilwoman Garza's point, here's great news. I told you, two thousand and twenty-three is going to be a different year. We're starting the new Public Safety Specialist on March twenty-third. That's a mouthful. Chief Brandon Winkenwerter, who's behind me, he is leading this. Your PSSs are going to be civilians. They can be hired faster, and they're going to go out onto the streets and they're going to take reports where suspects are not on scene and they're not in custody. For every report they take, the officer is not having to go to that call. What is the officer doing? The officer is now working on those criminogenic effects that Councilwoman Garza referenced earlier. So if you want to know what we can do, we can look at hiring public service, correction, public safety specialists, sorry, Brandon, hiring more of them because we can hire them faster, get them on the streets, serving our citizens faster. And every time you send a PSS, you're not sending a police officer. And then the police officer can do preventative work. That's where we've got to go. We are going to operationalize the nine downtown cameras. Folks, it should have already been done. You're, we're at the mercy of the vendor. That is under the leadership of Commander Spiegel. It's nothing to his fault, we're just working with the vendor, it should have already been done. I would love to tell you that it's soon. We're going to purchase pan tilt zoom cameras for high-crime areas. I don't have enough time to explain all of that. And then we're going to continue to migrate our violent criminal apprehension team toward proactive investigations. That's a mouthful, I don't have enough time to get into it. All right, strategies to consider. You already know that in two thousand and twenty-one, we did a comprehensive staffing analysis, and it said then, in two thousand and twenty-one, we needed ten additional officers. Since that report, you've authorized two. So the delta is eight, plus however much we've grown since two thousand and twenty-one. So we need to continue to contemplate full-time peace officers and fill the academies so we can get those positions filled. And then we also need to continue to evaluate civilian positions that can be hired faster and with fewer expenses. I talked a little bit about that. If we want to do additional crime analysis, y'all know that I'm a data nerd. I need more Marthas, I need more Patties. Those types of things we have to evaluate. Here's another thing. We need to evaluate, do we want to spend mandatory overtime or reduction in services? So this is a crunch point, I really need council to clearly know where we're at. We just had this conversation recently. We are to the point where the officers are so burned out from working so much overtime. How much overtime? In two thousand and twenty-two, we spent one-point-one million dollars on overtime in the police department. They are so burned out that your officers are saying no to coming in to support short staffing on the streets. Our minimum staffing on the streets should be six. Sometimes this city, city is protected by four. None of us should be okay with that number. So do we institute mandatory overtime and burn out already frazzled cops? Or do we look at a reduction in services? I'm going to suggest that we probably need to look at a reduction in services, hence the next slide. In planning, priority three, priority threes have to be dispatched in forty-five minutes. We're probably going to stop responding to noise violations during high call load. I shouldn't say probably, we are. That's the reality. If we're, if we're busy, we're going to call to call, my command staff knows, we are not going to make that call on noise. We just can't do it. We're going to stop sending officers to crashes with no injuries or toes, absent a known disturbance. Some citizens will say, I demand an officer, and we still send. At some point, we have to say we cannot send, we simply do not have the available staffing. Now, if there's injury, or we need to get a tow or a wrecker to facilitate the tow, we'll still do those. We need to refer all illegally parked vehicles to parking enforcement, even after hours for next-day follow-up. Your police officers are still being sent because there's a posted street sign on my street that you can't park here between these hours. Folks, we've got to get the cops out of doing that parking enforcement. We've got to push it to civilian employees who can do the follow-up on that. And then we need to restore online reporting in two weeks. Audrey Verver, I referenced earlier, she hopes to be operational within two weeks. So that's good news there. So any questions? I flew through that, I apologize. Chief Stevens doesn't think I did, but I did.
Ms. Garza?
Thanks, it's not a question, it's just, like, again, I appreciate the updates, this is more a message for my peers, just as we gear up to chat about human services funding and whatnot. And just like reemphasizing the importance of us working alongside San Marcos PD, who is making strides on their end to address crime prevention. Just reiterating that more attention to economic instability, eviction, and other social and economic factors associated with crime is a very promising evidence-based intervention avenue that could truly help us promote public safety. And that's really not something that chief can do, right? Like he's doing his part, like he's doing the police part. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that, just as, as we talk about all these other things and teeing up for future ARPA Fund conversations, it's like, how are we going to do our part in addressing the, the, in disrupting the conditions that lead to crime, right? It could truly be like a holistic community effort. So thank you, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, and Mr. Gonzalez has a question.
Well, thank you. You keep talking about civilians, employees, I quite don't understand what that means, or what does it take to be one of those employees? Another question is, at one time, we called and we asked if we could have some, I'm going to call them dummy vehicles parked in different neighborhoods. How successful was that, and if it was, can we continue to do that?
Yeah, great question. The dummy vehicles in high-crime neighborhoods will, they'll soon be discovered that they're empty, and they'll be vandalized. So we've got to have, I wouldn't recommend, that's probably not a good police strategy. That's why we need cameras. And we've already purchased some cameras, we're going to purchase more cameras, and we probably need to purchase more cameras. So we would leverage hotspots in neighborhoods via camera. As it relates to civilian employees, think of it this way, I'm a police officer, so I'm sworn, I'm a classified member of civil service. A civilian employee, a records clerk, an analyst, a telecommunicator, our dear Tammy Strachus, Sheila Schutz, all of them are civilians. They're not sworn employees. I regret to say there's not pay equity, there never has been in any police department I've ever seen. And so civilians can be hired at a faster process, and they typically have lesser salaries. I regret that, but that's, that's the reality. So we could hire many civilians faster, but obviously, we have fiscal constraints, and that's where city manager Reyes is going to come into play. What can we afford?
And I guess they get to use the vehicles as well?
Is what?
They get to use the vehicles as well, police vehicles?
Are civilians? No, sir. No.
I guess I still don't understand, you say you can dispatch a civilian-
Oh, you're talking about the Public Safety Specialist?
Yeah.
Okay, so they'll be civilians, they won't have guns, they won't have badges, they'll wear literally cargo pants and a nice polo shirt that's already been identified. They're going to go through training by Commander Sam Myers and others. They'll be trained on report writing, they'll be trained on evidence, they'll, they'll get comprehensive training. They'll drive an unmarked police unit. It's, it could be a leased vehicle, it could be a Honda Accord, I have no clue what it's going to be. But it's going to be a leased vehicle. It's not going to be a police package vehicle. They're going to drive an unmarked, they're going to have radios, they're going to have computers, and their dispatch is going to- computers and their dispatch is going to dispatch them to these calls and they're going to fully handle the call. They're going to go there, they're going to collect evidence, photograph, take fingerprints, take reports, talk to the victims, file everything. Officer never ceases the call for service.
Right. Do we have any of our vehicles vandalized when they were parked in, let's just use Broadway for an example, the dummy vehicles?
Brandon, did we? No, no, sir.
Do we have any vehicles vandalized, period?
On specific incidents? I forget about the microphone. On specific incidents where they may have gone to calls, that could happen if they walked off and left the car. That normally happens at loud parties. It sometimes happens to our downtown units. They park behind an alley or something and someone finds the car when they're out on foot. We'd have those types of incidents, but we didn't have any specifically related to where we parked the cars on traffic calming initiatives that we did like I-35 or Broadway.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
That was really close, really awkward.
Thanks, Mayor. I have a question about, at one time we were discussing and in our local agreement with the university for extra foot patrol downtown. I know there's been some changes upon the university. What is the status of that?
So there, I just talked to Chief Carmichael. Beth and I attended their annual awards ceremony last week. He has authorized, I believe, 36 sworn. He ranges five to eight short. And so I followed up with Commander Myers and Sergeant Portboy and asked this question. How often are they helping downtown? Sergeant Portboy said that they have an officer usually help one night per week. That's about all their staffing can afford, but I'm not going to look a gift horse in the mouth. We'll take that one officer one night per week. Now, initially when we started it, the goal was two officers, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. His staffing can't contemplate those right now.
But if they, if there was a potential increase in staffing up there, do you think that that is a good program and that should be something to continue?
Yeah, Chief Carmichael wants to. In fact, he wants two officers downtown, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday to work alongside your officers from 11:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m.
Okay.
That's correct.
Mr. Gleason, you may be thinking about an MOU that we did with them in years past with, I'm going to say seven, eight years ago, where we actually did that MOU prior to Chief Standridge's employment with us, so he wouldn't know. But we actually paid their officers as contract employees to work down there. That's when we were trying to fill our own vacancies with overtime. So that may be what you're referencing.
Yeah, I was, I was kind of referencing in that and I was curious if we were, I know at some point we were potentially funding some of that and that, you know, it just, it's just, it's a great way to, for the problems we have downtown, for to show that presence. So thanks for the clarification.
Okay. But please, let's make it fast. Enter on your microphone.
Chief, last, last question. This weekend, or was it last weekend, I passed through downtown and I saw more than our four or six officers. Was there, y'all working with another agency out there or downtown on a Saturday night?
They, they could have had a university police department officer with them Saturday night. I don't know specifically. We typically will, our goal is to staff it with three officers and a corporal. Oh, I'm going to move out of the way because we were way too close last time.
So what we usually do at downtown at different times, if it's busy, we'll flood the district officers into downtown to provide support to how many ever downtown guys we got. Because some nights, there's only two downtown guys down there. And with 1,000, 2,000 people in the downtown area on a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, two people can't handle that. So if you grab two district units and dump them down there, or grab four district units and dump them down there, we'll do that. And officers communicate their needs. They all know what they need and what's going on in that area. To be safe, you don't want to be surrounded if something goes bad.
I just didn't want all six officers there.
Oh, you wanted a little more freedom? I can understand that.
Thank you.
Mr. Prather?
Great presentation, chief. Great job, S and P D. I really like this intelligence-led policing, this new strategy, new technologies. It will make our community safer. The most important thing is, as policymakers and people that deliver up resources, it will make our community safer if we provide those additional resources, a surge in resources, but more importantly, a surge in additional, additional personnel. When you mentioned the burnout, it was concerning because I don't know if there's a police term for it, but in the military, we would call it a casualty rate. And there was a few-year period where S and P D sustained a significant casualty rate. So I want to make sure our officers that we know that they're supported in our community, that we're going to be providing them the resources, the personnel, so we're not having those things of burnout, that we're, are backing up these new strategies that will make our community safer. So great presentation, a great organization, S and P D. Y'all do difficult and dangerous work every day.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for looking at technology. And all the things you're doing to improve.
And while Chief Stevens is making his way up, what I will say on, on Chief Standridge's staffing plan, I know we've committed to, and counsel has committed to wanting to, you know, add some additional resources and personnel. One of the things I've asked him is let's, let's come up with a plan, you know, for how, how we're going to implement these. And, you know, we've talked about officers specifically, but if he really feels like he can get more impact by having some civilian, then we need to look at how we integrate that within the plan. So just wanted to let y'all know. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Chief Stevens?
Chief Stevens, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. Les Stevens, Fire Chief. Before we begin, the first thing I want to do, and I know this wasn't rehearsed, so I'll couch this correctly. Chase has the emotional intelligence to understand what I'm going to say, but that guy right there is the right guy in the right place at the right time. I know what has probably had a synergistic effect on, on that is the movement of Chase from the PD to the city manager's office, because I think there was an absence sometimes of our voice in certain conversations. And I know Chase brings that to those discussions, but I can't say enough about the job that Chief Standridge and his staff are doing. And I want to thank you all for taking the time to come and support them. I say often, I know the council hears from a very, very vocal minority in our community that says they don't support them, but by and large, this community supports our police department. Thank you. With that, that was his 30-minute presentation. Thanks, chief, for keeping it short. With that, I would like to introduce to you this afternoon, your Assistant Chief from the Fire Department over Personnel and Administration, Carl Coleman. Carl has literally sat in every seat in your fire department except the Fire Chief Chair, and I have no doubt that here or somewhere else, he will eventually do that as well. Carl is extremely, extremely intelligent and is behind most of the things that I typically get to come up here and talk to you about. He is the brains of the operation. Carl has numerous degrees, but when he moved from operations to our budget administration process, Carl went back to Texas State where he received a master's degree in accounting and information technology with a perfect 4.0. He also received an award as the outstanding student from the dean the year that he graduated. Recently, as we have been trying to keep up with this new hot rod police chief y'all found, and all his IT data analyst people, we have begun using at a greater rate GIS for many of our things, and that also falls on to Chief Coleman. He has now returned to school and is working on an associate's degree in GIS. So I've asked Chief Coleman to come. He built most of this presentation, so I felt it appropriate to have him present it. If time allows at the end, we're going to take just a couple of minutes and he and Hayden will set up a GIS system in the back where you all can see it, and then I will return to narrate that. But with, no further ado, I'll turn it over to Assistant Chief Carl Coleman. Thank you.
Mayor, Counsel, Carl Coleman, Assistant Chief with the San Marcos Fire Department. Nothing like following Chief Standridge up on a presentation and then chief saying all that stuff about me and me trying to live up to that. So not very smart. I'm going back to school again, right? That just proves that. So today marks my 10,402nd day with the city of San Marcos. Give or, give or take. I just had to throw that out when Chief Standridge brought that up. So one, one thing I have on him. So today I have the honor of presenting our fire department update and a 2022 year in review. So some of the things I'm going to go over are very, maybe boring, a little bit technical, but I think it just gives you the backdrop you might need if you don't have that as to how our reporting works, which ties into incident types, which will then help me explain our call volume for 2022 in the past several years. I will talk about station locations, mainly future station locations where those are slated to go. And then I'll talk about all our divisions, our prevention, our sports services, our training. And then lastly, I'll address our staffing issues as well, which we do have. I do want to point out that all of these things that you see on the screen are there to support our operations division. We do everything we do, especially on my side of the house, to make sure that the firefighters have the apparatus, the facilities, the equipment they need, the training they need to get everything done. And so we support them. They're the ones that are going out during winter storms, during rainy events to respond to those incidents. They see horrible things. So we're there to support them and they also support all those divisions, as I'll talk about here in a little bit. So there's a lot of acronyms and I apologize, I'm just the messenger. So we report to the Texas Fire Incident Reporting System, also known as Texas FERS. And then that goes up to the National Fire Incident Reporting System, which is also known as EMFERS. All of our reports come from the CAD, which is a computer aided dispatch system, into our reporting system. And then that, like I said, gets pushed out to Texas FERS on a monthly or quarterly basis. Texas FERS and EMFERS, they use that information to supply the United States Fire Administration, USFA, with very important information on things like the nation's fire problem, right? What's going on in the nation that we need to address? What messages do they need to get out to the public with one of their public education campaigns that we need to focus on? Again, public education programs I just spoke about, that they will make changes to national codes and standards based on fire problems they've discovered. Consumer product failures. When we go to a fire and we determine that a toaster is the cause of this fire, that information gets entered in our incident report with a model number, a serial number, if we can obtain that. They'll use that information and they can determine that, hey, this toaster has a problem nationwide and we need to recall those units. And that's why you guys will see a lot of those recalls from time to time. They use the information we provide for the research efforts and to help support federal legislation. So then I want to talk about our incident types. And you'll see there's nine broad categories. And under each category, they get more and more specific. So under fires, that, that accounts for our structure fires, that accounts for our grass fires, our vehicle fires, anything fire-related goes under that first category. Explosions, that next category, gas explosions, steam explosions, chemical reactions, explosions from bombs, anything like that go in that category. EMS and rescue, which you'll see here shortly, is our, is our largest call volume category. And it's anything from heart attacks, strokes, to vehicle accidents, right? So extrications, things like that. And then any type of rescue, whether it be swift water, high angle, any of those things our folks are trained for, that falls under that category. Hazardous conditions include fuel spills, hazmat spills, collapsed structures, aircraft standbys, if we have to go out to the airport in case a plane's coming in that has faulty landing or something, falls under that. Service calls or people in distress, if we have to go over and remove water or smoke from a structure, and then assisting the police department or outside agencies. Good intent or when someone calls, oh, service calls to animal rescues. I don't know if you can tell. It's a cat, cat in the tree. So, but animal rescues do fall under that. And there's times when we do have to go get animals from different places. Good intent calls, that's when someone calls 911 and they report something and then we go en route and we either don't make it to the scene, like they discover, hey, they're not needed. So we get canceled and routed, we show up and nothing's going on at the scene. So, or it could be a smoke scare. I don't know if you've seen down by the university, there'll be steams coming from like, you know, some of the gutters and like, people will call, well, it's, it's not smoke, it's just steam. So that's a 600. False alarms, false calls. So that's what she, what it sounds like, right? So false alarms at businesses. And, you know, whether it's malicious, right, or just a system malfunction, it can also be a bomb scare. If we've had a, you know, we have bomb scares from time to time, so that falls under that category. The 800 is a severe weather and that's more the assessments, right? If we go and check a low water crossing or something, that's what those are. And then the 900s are, it's a special incident type, so mainly if someone calls in and complains about some type of fire code issue that they see, like we can send someone, someone out and make sure that everything's up to code.
San Marcos is kind of unusual for a town of 70,000, you know, and then it's that Texas State, multiple-story buildings, usually towns of our size don't have those type of structures, Interstate 35, rail networks, you know, flash flood alley, droughts and fires. It seems like we just like, for a fire department of a town of 70,000, y'all just have more than a normal amount of problems that towns like ours don't have. Yeah.
A lot of things to happen.
I don't think I could say it any better than yourself there, council member. It's, it is a challenge, for sure.
And the airport.
Yeah, sure. Right? Yeah. So it's, it's definitely a challenge. The university used to be the only right place in town with high rises, right? And now you look around town and everyone's doing it. And to fight that, minimum staffing for us currently is 21 on duty at a time. And so three people per apparatus and then the battalion chief and their aide. And so sending 21 people to a two-story residential house fire, well, that's typically adequate, right? For all the things that are required to do. But you put that fire on the 15th floor of a high rise with people trapped and things like that, it just, that's where we have to call on all our, you know, surrounding fire departments and ask for their help.
And you fight those from the inside or the outside?
We, yeah, we have, if they're up that high, we have to go inside. Typically, all those fires will be fought from the inside.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So our call aim for 2022, as you'll see at the bottom right, is, was 8,190 calls. I know, I apologize, it's probably small. I'll just cover the large categories. So the top right blue pie wedge was our fire calls, right? At about 4% of our total call volume. That next gray chunk that takes up 53, 54% of the, of our call volume for, for 2022, were those rescue and EMS calls. And I mentioned, I can't even read this myself, I apologize. So the hazardous conditions were about 2%. The service calls, about 11 and a half percent. The good intent calls, about 22%. And then false alarms, false calls, 543 calls, which were about 6%. So on this slide, you'll see the far left was the year 2000 and we had just over 1,000 calls per year. And then you can see as we went up and the bars represent the number of calls each year, as you could see as we've gone along, it's steadily increased. And, and that line's representative of the population of San Marcos. And so you'll see a huge jump in 2020 to 2021, which I'm going to try and explain here in the next several slides. And then you'll see we did come down a little bit to 8,190 calls last year in 2022. Right now, we're about on track to hit that 8,000 call mark. So when I looked at this, and talking about that 48.8, 49% increase from 20 to 21, I assumed you guys would have questions. So some of the areas I looked at, right, were the EMS and rescue calls. And there, as you could see, a 32% increase in that, in that category. I, I think that's probably a result of the population increase, right? As we see it, just more people coming, more people are going to have medical issues, vehicle accidents. And speaking of vehicle accidents, I think all the construction on 35, right, that just causes tons of issues. And I think that's another reason why we're seeing an increase, a spike in that category. Our hazardous conditions, right? So those hazmat calls, things like that, a 27% increase. The big one, right, as far as percentage-wise, were our service calls. And they went up 132%. So we went from approximately 560 calls to about 1,300 calls. And again, this is, you know, the people in distress and, and assisting outside agencies. And so I think the major reason for this increase was because we stopped, we started sending two units to the interstate. So anytime there's a vehicle that was broken down, anytime there was a tire in the roadway, any hazard on the interstate, we would start sending units. In the past, PD would send, right, and try and assess. In the past, PD would send, right, and try and assess. And as y'all all are aware, right, we've had some unfortunate tragedies occur because of that. So we got with the police department, and we came up with a policy where we're going to help. And part of that help was the blocking program, right, that you guys approved, and City Manager's Office helped fund and find the money for. And so I'm busy trying to hire those folks, right, so we can get that program started. But I think a big, big part of these calls is that, are those types of calls. And then our good intent calls, right? So this, again, I think is, a car is stopped on the interstate, and we're going to respond, and then they get it moved off before we get there, right? Or somebody takes care of the incident before we get there. And so also, we're going to minor vehicle accidents. Where in the past, if no one was injured, if it wasn't a high mechanism of injury, as we call it, like, we wouldn't go. But now we're going if they're blocking or if they're causing problems. So we can provide that barricade with our large trucks to help protect the scene, help protect our officers, and I think that's the reason for that increase. False alarms, our next one, right, with a 62, 63% increase. And I want to say that's mainly because we're building more commercial structures, right? Multifamily structures, and all of those buildings are required to have fire alarms, and they're going to malfunction. And lastly, I think the, the big increase, I said the big increase, another reason for the increase from 20 to 21 was in six days, we had over 622 calls. Our folks were busy, they were worn out, they were tired. And if you see from 21 to 22, we had a decrease of about that same amount. And I really think that winter storm is what drove that higher number by that, that amount, Chief Standards talked about technology. Council, City Manager's Office, his leadership, we've been able to enhance technology in the dispatch center tremendously. As he mentioned, Audrey Verver is leading that team, and with their staffing shortages, right, they have to rely on technology as much as possible. We have Westnet, which is a station alerting, that's been recently approved by Council and the City Manager's Office. That'll be going online hopefully later this month. That'll help not only us with faster response times, but it'll help dispatch and help kind of alleviate the loads there. The other thing we use is something called the EMD, EFD, or EPD, which is Emergency Medical, Police, or Fire Dispatch. And so if you've ever had to call 911, they'll ask you a set of questions, and a lot of times, that can be infuriating to the person on the other line that's experiencing that emergency, right? But they're asking those questions because that call will be given what we call a determinant code. And if it's an omega level, which is the top left, in a, in medical scenario, we won't send any units. Fire department's not needed. If it's delta or echo, those people are having a really bad day, and we'll send EMS and fire. One thing we've tried to do internally to, like, keep our call volume down is to not, we're no longer responding to alpha and bravo level calls 95% of the time when it comes to a medical emergency. And it's not a reduction in service, it's just probably a smarter utilization of our resources, the limited resources we have. So next, I'd like to talk about the station locations. As he said, I'm starting to learn GIS, I realize how powerful and beneficial it is. Jess Noonan helps me tremendously, like, she was not a fan of my maps, so don't judge her on these. She wanted me to redo these, but I didn't have time, so these are the maps you have. But I wanted to just show you where our fire stations are, and thanks to Amanda Hernandez and her leadership, we're able to, like, in these new subdivisions, we're able to get land for future fire stations. And that's the hardest thing, as you all know, if we wait and try and get land after something's built, it's just sometimes impossible to do. So Fire Station 7, which is desperately needed to cover the north side of a town, is already, we have land located there at Opportunity Boulevard in Harris Hill. Through your leadership and City Manager's guidance, we were able to secure funding to find land at 111 East MLK downtown to replace Fire Station Number 1, which is desperately needed as well. Brandon Tomassini, like, was huge in helping us secure that deal and get that pushed through. So again, without your support, without the funding, we wouldn't have been able to have that land for the fire station. Chief and I joke that, like, when it's built, we probably won't be here, but like, the future fire chief will probably appreciate that, so. Airport fire station, in the master plan, we have that, and once the airport reaches a certain level, right, where they have scheduled commuting flights, that'll be required, but at least now, we have the land for that fire station. I, I am happy to say, if you haven't been by there lately, the Phase 1 of the training facility, our two, our two-station burn building is under construction, they started going vertical, so we're super excited to have that going on, and then to add a fire station down the road will be amazing. And then the Cottonwood Creek Fire Station location, so out at the Water Tower, out Highway 123, that's just another location where the city secured land. We dedicated it to a fire station location. Once we determine that that's needed, Chief Stevens can talk about call volume and what drives where the next fire stations can go. So those are the ones that I currently know about where we've had secured at least land for those future fire stations. Elizabeth Ellers in Development Services, she's provided this information. And so when we talk about call volume increases, right, and tying that to population, one thing we can't ignore is all the new single-family residential homes being built in San Marcos. And the total, as of December 31st, for permits issued, over 4,000. And then once those neighborhoods are built out, we're going to top over 7,000 new homes just in those communities alone. There's several more that we've discussed that I think are in development agreements, planning, you know, that I'm not addressing here, which obviously drives the need even further. And unfortunately, like, where those development agreements are, there's no fire station anywhere close, right? And if we're trying to keep response times low, we have to look at fire station locations and those developments as well. Want to talk a little bit about our prevention division and just show you the workload they're doing. So all these buildings that are being built, commercial, multifamily, you'll see a steady increase in the inspections that not only they're doing, but our operations folks are doing as well. They've done a fantastic job with the support, again, of you guys and City, City Manager's Office. We've been able to increase the staffing and prevention, which is helping tremendously. Public education, we took a big hit with COVID, right? When COVID happened, a lot of our events that everyone loves, that, you know, Chief Stevens helped bring to San Marcos, we had to shut down, unfortunately. But thankfully, like, I'm happy to announce that all of those are slated to happen in 2023, and a knock on wood. The Citizens Fire Academy is amazing. I'd encourage all of you, if you haven't attended, to attend. Mayor Hewson was in our inaugural class, and if you have any questions, she'd be a great person to go to. You'd learn so much about the department and what we do day in and day out. You get to actually put on bunker gear and go into a burning building, and you get to cut up a car, and we throw you in the river and see if you could swim, and we'll rescue you if you can't. So it's, you know, it's a great educational opportunity. The Junior Fire Academy, we hold those, two academies every year, and that, you know, other than COVID, right? And that's where we bring our young kids in, and we teach them fire safety. Captain Louis Gonzalez heads that up, and it's amazing. Many years ago, we started the Resident Advisor Fire Academy, and that's where we go to Texas State, and we train all the RAs from the entire university on fire safety. And we talk about the Station Nightclub Fire, if any of you recall that. We teach them how to use fire extinguishers. They actually use a fire extinguisher and put out a real fire. And it's, we'll fill up a dorm hallway of smoke and show them how hard it is to get out of a hallway filled with smoke, and how important it is to know your exits. And that way, our, our goal is, right, we can't educate every student living on campus, but hopefully the RAs can pass that knowledge on to them. We, we've reached hundreds and hundreds of folks through those, those programs. Public education, again, we'll be starting this back up, fired up about reading at the library. Our clown shows will be starting back up, going back to the schools, and over 200,000 folks impacted and reached by those programs. And then our smoke detector installations, over 286 detectors installed throughout the community for folks that can't afford to purchase a smoke detector on their own. We'll go out and we'll help install the, if they can, we'll still, we'll go out and install them if they need help. So something that we do. I guarantee you it's more than that, that's just how long we've been tracking those numbers. And then investigations, I will note that the first year, which is fiscal year 19, and I apologize again for the small text, but this is when we started recording this, this data. And so you'll see why there's not a lot of investigations. These are only the investigations done by folks in prevention, right? Normally, our operations folks will handle those, you know, they go on scene and they can figure out easily why, how the fire started, they'll handle it. If they have to call prevention out, someone will come out for prevention, and that investigation can take a couple of hours, up, up to four or five, a week, two weeks longer, right, depending on the scene. So just wanted to mention that. Support services, led by Battalion Chief John Koenig, and then Kurt Shuttle, an engineer, like, they're amazing. As I said, everything we do is in support of operations. And so with the help of Fleet Services, Ricky G., Robert Martinez, they maintain over a fleet of 50 apparatus, right? Trying to keep all those on the road can be difficult. And not only do they maintain it, Battalion Chief Koenig helps spec all those apparatus, so he helps design those apparatus to meet the needs of operations. They maintain all the facilities and help in designing those facilities. We, we have a fire technology specialist, Rudy Ramirez, so he helps, you know, with coordination from the Information Technology Department to keep all our IT needs up. And as you can imagine, like, in this day and age, we're getting more and more technology on the fire trucks and in the hands of the firefighters, helping keep them safer, the, the public safer. And then, no, I, I said facilities, the equipment was the last thing, right? So chainsaws, air packs, things like that. And again, operations helps with that. And then the facilities, maintaining those and making sure they have all the supplies they need and, you know, in conjunction with the facilities department, like, they help keep everything going there. Hitting on training just a little bit, led by Battalion Chief Howard Minor, and then our EMS captain, Louis Gonzalez. As you can see, this is just for 2022, and you probably can't read any of those numbers. I think that's about 15,000 hours worth of training just in 2022 alone, and it goes from rescue through prevention, leadership training, hazardous materials training, fire is the big long bar, and then EMS. And so we have folks that have all three certifications, an EMS certification, a fire certification, and a police officer certification, RR's investigators, and so they have to maintain all those certifications, and that's one of the reasons we have so much training. We do have, I'm happy to report, 34 of our 88 sworn personnel are paramedics, which is the highest EMS certification we can have. So again, speaking of technology, on the fire trucks now, we have advanced technology that if we get there before the ambulance, our paramedics can help more than they've ever been able to. And we have nine in school currently, so we're steadily trying to increase the number of paramedics. And we'd love to, I don't know, I don't know where he wants to go with that, but we're trying to, to, to get a lot of them. And so the last thing I'll hit on is our staffing update, and if we were fully staffed, we'd have 101 sworn and non-s sworn personnel. That counts the folks in prevention. Currently, I have nine vacancies. It shows that I have five starting on April 17th. I'm actually down to four. So I have four starting on April 17th, and my current list is exhausted, so I'm going to have to go out and test again. And hopefully, we'll have that scheduled soon. So we still, it's not as hard or bigger problem to fill our vacancies as it is with the police department. It, it, it is challenging. And so one of the things we tried to do in the past was hire folks that already had a paramedic and firefighter cert. Well, we just, we'd only have two or three people show up for the, the exam. So now we're working with our association, with HR, to maybe start letting anyone, like, with a high school diploma, test with us, and then we'll send them to fire school, we'll send them to ENT school. So just trying to up those numbers so we don't have these vacancies sitting out there. That's the end of my part. I'll turn it over to Chief Stevens. If anyone has any questions for me, I am happy to address those.
Chief?
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, it's great, and a bunch of good information in there. I think one of the things on everybody's mind is the train situation. I've been getting a lot of questions, been a lot of discussion, of exactly what those mean to our community, coming and going, and where do they go? And can you kind of discuss any of that and get into kind of some details about how much you're aware of what's coming through our community, what is diverted around town as far as hazardous materials, and how prepared you are, or what you may need in the future to handle some of those situations?
Chief, let me touch on that real quick and then turn it over to you, if you would. Chase Stapp, Assistant City Manager. And I only asked to do that because that was actually a recent question that I met with our emergency management coordinator, Mr. Fitch, about, about a week and a half ago. You know, people are very much clued into that conversation right now because of the two derailments in Ohio. We've had some, you know, not nearly as tragic here as well. But we started the conversation by talking about what we could do moving forward for evacuation plans for specific neighborhoods that are situated along the tracks. In that conversation, we learned that the railroad recently has made available to us an app, an application, that will allow us to see some, if not all, of the contents of the rail cars moving through our community. So I asked him to dig further into that so we could determine, you know, what data we could learn from that, and then resume the conversation about what plans we would need to make for our individualized neighborhoods. So that's what I wanted to touch on, and Chief Stevens may have some information from the fire department perspective.
Absolutely. To Councilman Prather's point earlier about the all hazards, a lot of communities claim to be an all hazards department, and, and maybe they are. We truly are. We have a swim test as part of our entrance exam. I don't know of another department in the state that does that. In addition to our basic firefighter certification, the two things that we have added since I've been the fire chief is we require 100% of our members to be certified in swift water rescue, for obvious reasons, and hazardous materials technician. We are part of a regional hazardous materials team. It's through the CAPCOG. It had originally four teams, Austin, City of Austin Fire had one, Travis County. Those have now been combined into one under Austin Fire. Williamson County had a second one, and the City of San Marcos was operating the third for Hayes County. A few years ago, we had carried that burden long enough, we shifted the vehicle and some of the maintenance cost to the City of Kyle, or Kyle ESD Fire Department, and we're still an active participant. We utilize Station 3 on Hunter Road as our hazmat station. Captain Jeff Green coordinates that program for us, and we repurposed a small utility vehicle that we had for hazardous materials response. To Chief Stapp's point on a train derailment, I wouldn't get too worried about it. The stuff going up and down that interstate's a lot worse. So to the, to the point, all you're going to do initially is, is isolate. If there is someone there to be saved, rescue them, we will do that, and then start those evacuations, as Chief Stapp spoke to, and then start to identify the product. What makes a train derailment much more complex than an over-the-road accident is the combination of the different chemicals. Luckily for us, it's heavily regulated, and most of those aren't reactive with one another. They're required to have so much space between them and, and the configuration of a train. So we're able to take care of most of that. It will be a long and heavy lift for us, we'll be activating a lot of different agencies to come and assist us with that. And then the cleanup, typically, just like it has there, the cleanup falls to private contractors, some of whom are already under contract with the carrier. We wouldn't have to intervene with that. Whoever is running the actual transportation, be that the truck or the train, they've already contracted with a private provider that will be en route within minutes of the event, and they will take over the actual remediation, cleanup, and restoration after the fact. We're as, we're as well-prepared as you can be with 17 people, 21 people on duty each shift, sir.
And I, and I understand statistically, the rails are a much safer way to move goods and services, but those incidents tend to be more public, right? And, and they're on the forefront of everyone's mind. And so I just kind of wanted to clarify that, you know, for the public's sake, that it's something that is being looked at, and you guys are discussing these situations. So it was just more of a clarification of everything, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Garza?
Thanks. I think it is more like a comment. So I mentioned this before, but I just feel compelled to reiterate, like, how impressed I am appreciative I am towards the fire department. Even as of recently, I got really good feedback from neighbors in my, in my neighborhood, and then neighbors in the neighborhood I used to live in. And, yeah, just like really good feedback, but beyond that, again, I think it's like noteworthy to highlight how neighbors continue to share the compassion of the fire department and the patience, particularly when receiving more critical feedback. I think sometimes neighbors just want to be heard, and I think you guys do a good job at that. But also, like, it's just impressive, just given like how chaotic a lot of those experiences are, y'all's ability to like talk folks down in a calm way. And then the inspection, this is something new, and I think it stemmed from a conversation we had regarding, like, the changes in the code and stuff. I appreciate hearing from neighbors that y'all provide the information that they need to get through the process. I think that's, that's really important. And then lastly, the point about public education, teachers have commented, like, when the firefighters coming back to the schools, so thank you for that update. But that's really all I have. I'm curious, maybe- So thank you for that update. But that's really all I have. I'm curious, maybe this could be an email. What types of, like, training do you guys give to, so that y'all's, I guess, like, community engagement, or just like customer service, like how, like what, like modules, or like what professional development activities do you guys engage in? Because, yeah, it's just, it's been really interesting to hear these feedbacks, particularly from people who don't typically have a big trust for government in general. Like, that's impressive to me. Like, that stands out. But you don't have to answer that now because of time. You can just, like, email me or something. It's just curiosity.
If I could, thank you for the compliment. I do appreciate that. And to your point, culture. We've built a culture over the last 13-plus years, and I think it existed here before I got here, and we've fostered it, we've encouraged it to provide that level of service. We talk to people when we hire them. You know, we have 38,000 students here. Those are other people's kids. And we're asked to do things to help keep them safe when their parents are sometimes 10 minutes away, 10 hours or further away. And you can't work in this community and not embrace that. Same thing with some of our at-risk populations. And I'm fortunate that we've been able to attract and retain people that buy into that culture of customer service. And we want to beat the library. So we beat them twice, we tied them this time, doggone it. But we're coming back. We'll get another crack at it here in a few years. But no, that's something that's a part of our daily conversation. So I appreciate you acknowledging that. But thank you.
No, for sure. Especially given, like, the increase. Like, all those statistics are so helpful. Like, not only are you guys continuing to, like, the feedback is consistent, but that's even within, like, a 48.83% in, like, increase. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thanks to you. Thanks to Carl.
Thanks to Chief Standridge. Thanks to all for the information that you have provided to us today, for the answers that you've provided to our questions. So thank you so much for what you do and what you're going to do for us in the future.
Excellent. We have two more things. First, before we get loose, we're remiss in not acknowledging and recognizing Bucky Couch. Several years ago, we brought up, part of our hiring process was to include a citizen stakeholder. And early on, we kept somebody on there for about maybe one or two cycles, and they'd had about enough of that. I'm trying to think, Bucky, eight years, maybe more at this point? Bucky's made himself available at no charge at all to the city. We typically feed him a cold Jason's Deli sandwich and usually take up two full days of his time. But Bucky represents to us the view of the citizens in our hiring process, and he brings a lot of great value to those discussions. And every time we think we're going to have to go find someone else, recruit someone else, Bucky steps up again. So thank you, sir, for your service in doing that. And then lastly, I'm going to defer to the City Manager's office. We do have one more part of this presentation, and we can do it rather quickly. It's just to give you guys a little bit of an understanding of what we're doing with GIS as far as fire station location, district coverage, and mapping. To use Mr. Prather's word, it's going to be tricky. It may even be a little bit clunky because I'm not going to be able to drive it. I think Chief Coleman's going to have to go and drive it for us, or maybe even Hayden. So we'll see. I understand y'all can see this on your computers. Is that correct? Y'all be able to see what Hayden's presenting on your computers?
The folks at home do not see it.
We'll make this quick. It's much more impressive when you can, when you can see it on a gigantic screen. What GIS does is they're getting this set up. What GIS does years and years ago, back in the early 90s, when we first started talking about fire station location coverages, regardless of the size of the map you had, you would typically take a compact disc, put a pin in the middle of it and draw a circle, and those concentric circles would come to represent coverage areas or districts. The problem was, it wasn't relative to the size of the map at all. Whatever size the map was, everybody got a CD's worth of coverage. A little bit flawed, right? So as that has evolved, what we've come to appreciate is GIS is a phenomenal tool for this. A few years ago, I wrote a paper on future fire station location planning for the city. We actually have this planned out at that time through 16 fire stations. I think you're nearing 20 at this point, that you will need probably most of those in the next 25 to 30 years, if your population growth continues along the route it's projected. But what GIS does is it allows us to utilize the road network, both the current as-built and the thoroughfare master plan. So we can look at things that there is high levels of confidence that are going to be built. Right now, we can turn on the FM 110 all the way to Yarrington when we're mapping the coverage area of Fire Station 7, that is going to be at Harris Hill and Opportunity Boulevard, because we have an absolute certainty, if you will, that that is going to be completed. There are others that we are a little less certain, and so we might be hesitant to turn those on. One example might be the connector of Center Point from Kissing Tree up into La Cima. There's still a couple of pieces of land that need to be acquired for that to happen. The other thing this does is it gives us an opportunity to go in and program some variables. Rand did a study about 50 years ago, Rand of Rand McNally, that established that emergency response occurs at about 35, an average of 35 miles per hour. It's a really long formula. Chief Coleman has decided he is really interested. There's a way to change one of the values for local values. It's called the K-value. He's going to do an assessment to decide if we need to adjust 35 miles an hour, you got to think if it goes up 10% or down 10%, it will be a huge difference. But we're looking at that to see if 35 is accurate for us. They've redone this study a couple of times nationwide, and 35 continues to hold. So we assign every vehicle for this mapping process at a constant speed of 35 miles an hour. The other thing we can do is we can assign breaks in time for things such as interstates and railroad tracks. So if a railroad track is impeded the majority of the time, we might assign it a 30-second or one-minute variable. And any route that that fire apparatus or EMS unit would take that would traverse a railroad track, it would be penalized in this mapping program by 30 seconds or a minute based on the value we assigned. Also, we can look at left turns and right turns. Right turns, you can assign a value. They typically occur in about 15 seconds. Left turns in 30 seconds. And then we're able to start to look, once we know the location of the fire station, we can start to look at the road network with a known value of the response time or the travel speed, excuse me, and we can see exactly how far one of those apparatus could get if they were in quarters at the time the emergency occurred. And so that's what Chief Coleman is kind of showing here. I apologize. We're going to have to find another venue to better show this to council. But I did want to show you, Jess Noonan, who is our GIS manager, and Chief Coleman have more hours in this than you want to know. And I'll tell you how I know they're on the right track. This has traveled almost nationwide, and we've only been telling anybody we have it for about the last six months. And we've recently spent about half a day with officials from Guadalupe County. They came and sat with us to model this program. And an architecture firm that does work across the United States recently reached out to Jess. They had heard that I had this, and I directed them to her because she did most of the work, and she shared this with them. Austin developed a model called the Larson Model in 1978 to 81, and we hired, or I did, out of my pocket a few years ago as a consultant, helped me with one of my papers. That gentleman helped me with this. And so over this, that's what you're seeing there in those boxes. We've tried to determine whether or not that Larson Model that was developed by the City of Austin's Fire Department's Planning Division in 1978 is still accurate. And what we're finding is it is incredibly, incredibly accurate. The Larson Model was kind of the step between the CDs and GIS. If you think of chess, the rook, I believe it is, can move one forward and two over, or two forward and one over. That is what the Larson Model assumed. It wasn't able to yet watch the road network when deciding how far you could travel, but it did turn out to be incredibly accurate. What we can do with this, and again, I apologize that the visuals aren't that great for most of you, but we can turn on each station. We can assign the number of people to each apparatus, be that three or four, as the city continues to grow. And we can look at exactly where they can reach in four minutes drive time, which equates to about an eight-minute response time, where they can reach in six minutes drive time, which equates to about a 10-minute response time throughout this city. And we can start to pinpoint with almost scientific accuracy where your future fire stations need to be located. Chief Stapp, I know you've had an opportunity to see this. Anything you'd like to add to that?
I need to get the mic to turn on. No, Chief, thanks. I agree that we need to find an opportunity to let council see this in a way that they can see it better. I have seen it up close, and it's an effective tool. That's my takeaway from it. So thanks for sharing it with us.
Appreciate that. And Chief Coleman's back in the back driving it. I apologize, y'all can't see. Chief, can you turn off everything except the current Fire Station 1 at 6 minutes? So he's deselecting. Again, we've, one of the things in envisioning this with Jess Noonan and Chief Coleman, is I just had ideas, and I'm like, I don't know how to make it work. I just know what I want it to do when we get there. And they have gone away each time and come back closer and closer, and I think sometimes even exceeded what I had envisioned. So this is your current Fire Station 1 with a six-minute drive time based on your road network. We all know, we've already purchased land for a new Station 1. So I'll have Chief Coleman turn off. Before you turn it off, go ahead and turn on the new Station 1, Chief Coleman. You'll see it shifts just slightly when he turns on the new Station 1. I don't see it on just yet. There you go.
Chief, let me ask a question, just because I know we've got HSAB, and we still have an executive session. This isn't, I don't think it's doing justice.
Effective, okay.
And so we don't have a work session next time. So maybe we can, like, return this to the agenda, spend some time trying to make this a little more effective for next time, and that way council really gets out of it.
Excellent.
All the great work that y'all put into it, if that's okay.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
That'd be great. Again, use of technology, very helpful.
Yes. Really smart, really smart people that work here. So I applaud their efforts. Any other questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Trevino, item two on our agenda for the work session.
Poll discussion regarding allocating to nonprofit agencies human services grant funding of $500,000 from the city's general fund.
So Mayor and Council, our next item in regards to the Human Services Advisory Board's recommendations to allocate funding to nonprofit agencies. In January, City Council provided guidance to the HSAB with additional criteria and considerations. The HSAB met in February and created a revised funding allocation recommendation. We had an item allocating $500,000 in funding on this evening's regular agenda, and we also included this item on work session to provide City Council additional time for discussion. Staff has provided a paper handout of the recommendations sorted by rank and by amount at your places on the dais, and will provide a brief presentation on the updated recommendation. I'll now turn it over to Ms. Griffith to provide the presentation. Thank you.
Carol Griffith, Housing and Community Development Manager. Next slide, there you go. Okay, I'm, this afternoon, I'm going to provide a brief background and then present recommendation of the Human Services Advisory Board. On February 9th and 16th, the HSAB met to discuss the council's direction and consider reallocating the funding. Next slide. For reference, I have two slides that describe the council's direction to the HSAB. For example, council noted that the board should not feel compelled to fund all programs, and they should not allocate funding by percentage across the board. So that's just an example of what you see up there. Next slide. In addition, council asked HSAB to prioritize programs which met the four criteria in item three on this slide. So prioritize programs which increase services or increase the number of persons served, have an office in San Marcos, complete all quarterly reports on time, and have a proven track record of at least two years in San Marcos. So next slide. Using the information that we had, staff awarded five points for each of the four priority items that I just mentioned, and we added this amount to the existing score that had come from the Human Services Advisory Board, and then we sorted to create a new ranking order. Next slide. Applications did not have enough information to include two of the additional criteria requested by City Council, and these items will be put into effect with the next application cycle. And that is not funding more than 20% of a full-time position and not funding brand-new startup agencies. So these will be, these were not considered this year. We'll put them in next year. Next slide. Okay, here's the funding allocation update. Using the new rankings, the HSAB reconsidered the allocation of funding. The board strongly desired to fund all 38 applicants. As a first step, the top 15 received 55%, and the all others received 20%. Then the board reduced funding for the agencies who had requested very large amounts compared to other applications. Lastly, funding was increased for some long-term San Marcos programs and for two that serve unique populations. Next slide. So on these slides, I have listed all of the recommendations. This is really more for reference than anything. I realize this is a little bit small. So the funding recommendation totals to $500,000, which is the HSAB budget. On each of the next few slides, you'll see that the amount requested is in the colored column, and then the original board recommendation and the revised board recommendation. So the yellow highlight shows that the amount changed between the original recommendation and the current one. And we can use these slides for reference as needed. So next slide. And where are we at? Okay. So on page four, the part four of this recommendation, I want to bring to your attention, CORN, the community organization reaching neighbors. They contacted me to let me know they have dissolved, and so if they're awarded funding, they would not be accepting it. So we have that $5,000 for discussion. Next slide. So council's consideration of the human services grant allocation is on this evening's agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions, and this concludes my presentation.
Thank you. And please thank the Human Services Advisory Board for their work and for coming back and considering our new policy, for getting there on policy, and for going through all of these again and giving it some thought. So thank you. And thanks to them.
Ms. Reyes, are we ready to work this list?
Yes, ma'am. With the time that we have available, you also have this posted on your regular agenda. We're not able to get through everything, so. But yes, we are. And Mr. Meagle actually has a spreadsheet that he's willing to bring up, if that's needed.
Okay, council, we've got an executive session item. I suggest we push that to the 6 o'clock meeting, unless we finish this in five minutes, which is probably not. So we'll consider that. And at this point, we will go through, and once we get the spreadsheet up there, I hope y'all took the information that you had, worked through here. And we know that we've got 5,000 now more to work with. And I'm not sure how we're going to address this, so I'll just start taking questions as y'all can come up. And I've got a few that I'm going to suggest we'll change the funding on. So whoever, it's helpful if you raise your hand on the electronic, but that's what I need you to do. So I saw Ms. Mendoza first, and that next will be Mr. Gleason, and whoever raises their hand next.
First, I'd like to say that in no way am I trying to categorize as somebody's not needing funding, or I don't understand what their, everybody wants funding, everybody needs funding, and I'm sure all these organizations provide some kind of great resourcing. But something that stands out to me is the MELJ, the iron sharpens iron, the $40,000. And this is a program, and it's a great program, but they do...
This is item 38, if you're on the rank list.
And I was wondering if the council would be willing to move some of those funds out of the $40,000 to more immediately affecting programs that we have here in town. More particularly, I'm looking at maybe giving some more to the YSB, the Youth Services Bureau, maybe even some more to Nosotros la gente, just programs that are more focused on immediate means that we have here in town, please.
I agree. I have MELI, I believe it is, as zero.
That is great to me.
I did not see the return from that group for people in San Marcos and for the volume.
Yes, ma'am.
So I mark that one as zero. Are y'all okay with zero on that one?
And Mayor, I had a suggestion that I think might streamline this a tad bit. If we had something that we wanted to completely remove...
If we had something that we wanted to completely remove, if somebody had a suggestion on that that we do that...
That's where I'm going to go.
And then move those out, and then tally those funds up, and then divvy it out accordingly. Thank you.
I didn't want to interrupt Mr. Mendoza before, but yes, I think where we're going to reduce, we need to do those first, and then we'll see how much money we've got to go to the other worthy ones, because I've got more than one that I'm suggesting we go to zero.
Beautiful.
But we've got M-E-L-I first. My suggestion is zero. Mr. Mendoza asked, but we reduce it. I need to see how many people are good with zero.
I'm a zero on that one, Mayor.
Or zero?
Ma'am, I'm down. I'm okay with zero.
All right, so we've got zero on that one.
I just want the record to reflect that I'm not okay with zero there.
Okay.
Not usual numbers.
That's noted. Okay, but we have at least four, maybe five, who are okay with that one. So, we have that one. Ms. Mendoza, you still have the floor. Let's just talk about what we're reducing first, then we'll figure out what we can put money into after we know how much money we've got.
Yes, ma'am, and I would actually, and this just really has to go with what I know about Southside Community Center. I would like to see a reduction from the Home Center. Again, I'm not talking...
Okay, give us the rank number first.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'd like to see a small reduction from 33.
Give us the rank number first.
That is ranked...
The blue column, so we'll know where to find it.
I'm sorry, it's ranked 34.
Thank you.
I'd like to see a small reduction, not a massive, but a small reduction of that, please.
34, I'm sorry, that's not Southside.
No, it's, I was just comparing it to the Home Center.
Okay.
34 is what I'd like to see, a small reduction.
I tell you what, you're going to have to give me a number.
I'd like to see that deducted by at least, at least by five.
Are you talking about the Southside?
No, I'm not referring to the Home Center, number 34. My apologies, I just used Southside as a comparison.
And I think you, I think the Home Center also... Why is my audio on?
Turn that, my audio off.
I did, it's off. I don't know why it was doing that. Do be remembered that the revised board recommendations are not highlighted on there, so I think you misspoke, Mr. Mendoza, when you said it was 30. It was 20. Remember, go by the second column there, by the revised board recommendation. Just wanted to clarify for by column one, column two, rank, and then the numbers. So, Home Center was a 20 on the revised.
And Mr. Mendoza, can you please, I might have missed it, help me understand your rationale?
Oh, and it's mainly because of the programs that I see at Southside, not just for helping those with the homeless, but to, I'm sorry, the unhoused. But they provide food programs, they provide housing and emergency purposes, and it's somebody we go directly to. That's really the only reason why. I wasn't asking for a large reduction, but something to a little bit more to help out with the other programs that we know are in desperate need for immediately helping people out.
And your perception is that we don't go directly to the Home Center?
No, no, it's not that. We do have, historically speaking, since the Home Center is still a fairly new program, well, under 15 years, we've had Southside, who's been along, God, forever, for those who have grown up here. And it's just, Southside has always been the ones that step up. Now, they're also a much more known organization, and it seems that they're much more established. So, it seems that we should be able to give them a little more funding or somebody else who has that kind of establishment. Again, I'm not in any way saying Home Center's not a good program. It's just we're trying to reduce where we can be a little more efficient and what we're looking for, and that's also referring to people know Southside Center more, things like that.
I got you. I have a quick question. Did we, did everybody get like the full applications? Because I asked for like historic, like the full applications from every year that I've been in office. Do you guys have like the full, like has information on these organizations' entire budgets or just like the...
You're saying, do you? Who are you asking?
Yeah, like my peers on council.
I look at them every year, and I looked at them twice this year for this meeting and also for whenever it was that we discussed it before.
But like the full, right? Not like the condensed one that was like online.
I looked at the full application that was available online and downloaded them all.
Yes, ma'am. Well, yeah, it's just like, just pushing back on this, not pushing back, but just another perspective in that when you look at the fullness of the budgets and the services, like comparing Southside and Home Center, just like another perspective to consider is investing in those who are trying to establish themselves in town and have, you know, really stepped up during multiple emergencies. I do agree with your assessment that perhaps we should increase Southside, but I'm not necessarily in agreement with taking away from Home Center, given that they're like two of the few organizations that do that work, so.
So, we'll put you down as a no, you don't want to reduce Home Center. I am, I'm okay with it. I need to find out who else is okay with reducing home by the suggested 5,000.
I'm a no, and it's because both those organizations, it's kind of like robbing Peter to pay Paul, and, you know, they both perform great work, and they both have risen to the occasion during disasters, especially the multiple freezes we've had. I just wouldn't want to be seen to taking one from one of those organizations, that they both kind of service the same clientele group, they just do about it in different ways. I just don't want to...
Okay, so I have you as a no. And y'all, we don't need to filibuster our answers. Give your answer, and then I need to move on. Mr. Gleason, where are you on this one?
I'll do a slight reduction, as long as we're going to throw some extra on Southside. 5,000 is fine.
All right. I'll go back to Mr. Scott. Mr. Gonzalez?
I, my, yes.
Okay, so would you pull your microphone down a little bit so it's closer to your mouth? Mr. Scott, we're looking at the Home Center item of reducing it by 5,000 with the idea that we want to give some to Southside. And the reason why I am looking at this is Southside is a bigger organization. This is something that they do, and we can do more with the dollars because there's less going to administrative, because that staff is going to be there. And so, that's where I'm coming from on that, is I think we can get more dollars, more for our dollars. So, that's where I am. Mr. Scott, need to know where you are on this one.
Sounds good, Mayor.
Yes, okay. So, that's a yes. So, that's going to be 15. Mr. Mendoza, your next one?
That's all I have right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Mr. Gleason, did you not put your hand up? Because I told you you would be next. You had your hand up.
I just was making that suggestion at the beginning.
Just the one thing?
Just for now.
All right. Then, next, we have Ms. Garza.
Actually, I'm going to put my hand down for now because I need to bring up my document with my notes. Sorry.
Okay, all right. Then, council, I will go with my next ones. I've got one, and I believe we're talking about the rank by the new code, which is, I think, green. Okay, item 16. I have marked as a zero because that is a lot of money that is seeking applicants for one particular school. If they were out looking for minority and underserved for a number of different schools, that I'd be completely different on that, but I've got that one. I took that one down to zero. The school can register, and I'm sure they are, with Workforce Solutions and others in order that people can find them. So, I need to know who else is okay with...
I'm okay with that.
I see two 16s. Maybe I'm just like looking at it, I'm looking at the, one second, I'm looking at the spreadsheet that I downloaded earlier. Can you just like tell me what organization?
Treasury Protégé, asking for $65,000.
Mayor, I'm okay with a zero on that one.
Okay. Mr. Mendoza's okay with that. Mr. Prather is. Mr. Gleason, did you say yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Gonzalez, yes. Mr. Scott? Okay. Ms. Garza?
No, absolutely not.
All right, I've got you down as a no, but we have six of us that are at zero on that one.
That's so messed up.
Another one is Rough Draft. It's number 37. I'm not saying, it's like Mr. Mendoza said, I'm not saying any of these are bad programs. I'm looking at the return on investment. We have a limited amount of funding, and I'm looking at food, clothing, basic needs that people need to live. And so, that's why I have that one as a zero. Need to see if I've got...
Can you repeat the name? I'm sorry. Which one was that?
Are you okay with Rough Draft, which had the lowest rating? They moved to, okay. Ms. Garza, your thoughts on Rough Draft?
Uh, no.
All right. Council, I'm concerned on some of these where it's one government agency looking at another. My question was, and it was on the one for the school district, community in schools, 20, I'm sorry, 27. They asked for 35, and the board is suggesting 7,000. I've got a lot of things that I want to write down for our policies for next time, and my question here is, I don't, I think this is good, but why is the school district not doing that? Why are they asking, they doing part of it? They asking us for some funding? I don't understand why that is something that we need to give to another organization that taxes more than we do.
And I'm sorry, I don't know if the school district also pays part of that.
Yeah, I don't know. So, I'm having trouble with that one. I don't know where to put that one with dollars.
Did CORF4 ever discuss this?
Did what? I'm sorry.
Did CORF4 ever discuss that?
I'm not aware that...
Policy group has discussed it, but they do have also like a committee.
That meets more regularly, so that would be something we'd have to ask. I'm not sure.
That would be something where I would love that information before I went through funding at that, that if this was a collaborative effort coming from the beginning, then I might be more willing to do this, but for this year, I think I'm okay taking it out.
Okay. So, you saying yes, zero?
Yep.
I think that it would be helpful to get that answer because, in my opinion, the ISD has done such a good job, like filling so many gaps that some neighbors perceive should be the city and the county's gap, particularly during the pandemic. And communities and schools is just such a fundamentally important program...
Yes.
...for our youth that have very, very few resources. They, like, they help, they help fill the gaps for a lot of lack of mental health services and gaps in like, not just the individual student, but the whole family, right? When we talk about the fact that San Marcos is one of like the, has such a significant percentage of uninsured or underinsured individuals, like that really helps pour into the family as a unit. So, I'm not comfortable just saying no without getting those answers first. And to me, it's like if they're coming and asking us for money, then like clearly they've already gotten like other money from the district?
I tell you what, Ms. Garza, I can split the difference on this one. I had this one down as some questions on it. 7,000 was a pretty significant amount considering some of the other distributions we did. I could be open to giving this one, if you, maybe cut this one in half to 3,500. And even someone...
I was going to say two.
Honestly, as far as I'm concerned, I do agree 1,000% with Ms. Garza. Given the changes in the arrangements we've made so far, I think we could try to make it $7,000. I think if we could try...
You want to keep it at seven?
I would, yes, ma'am.
I'm going to split the difference at 35 for now, so we round up.
You're going 35.
Keep it at seven.
Two, seven.
Ms. Garza, thank you.
Split the difference.
35, three and a half. Ms. Gonzalez?
35.
Ms. Garza, give me a number, please.
Oh, I want it all.
So, you want a seven. Okay, council, we've got...
Yeah, but I appreciate the conversation.
Okay, council, we've got three people at seven. We've got three at three and a half, and I'm a two. I can go to three and a half, so that makes it three and a half.
That'll work.
Is the spreadsheet, is it updating the numbers as we're...
Yes, that's why he's doing it up there.
What's the bottom, you know, what's the total?
If you'll put a calculation there about the 500,000 minus what that number is, and so that we can see what, how much we've got available.
I'm a visual guy. If y'all could help with that, I can...
Yeah, that's what I...
Because, I mean, these are gut-wrenching decisions. You're just like, all these great organizations, but you're also going to have to look at the bottom line, what the numbers are.
Okay, council, it's at 5:30. I don't know if we will finish this now. We had hoped we would, but we had such good information from fire and police that we needed to see and hear. So, do you want to go ahead and break now and finish doing this at the agenda item where we're expected to approve this? Or do you want to go a few more minutes, but I don't think we're going to finish?
I would...
How okay with postponing it just mainly because of the CIST quarter?
No, it's not being postponed until six o'clock this evening. We're scheduled to, this was our workshop.
Okay.
That was going to be when we finalized it. If we want to push some of these and leave some money available, we can still do that, but we have really held up giving this money out to many who need it. I don't want to hold up the entire process another day. I hope y'all don't either.
No, no, I want to...
I want it not either.
Okay. So, we could hold some items out, but we'll have to leave some money to assess on that one.
And the rest of our agenda is not that bad tonight. We should be able to finish this later on.
We should have time.
It's the best agenda.
That sounds good.
Do you need a motion to go into executive session for the other item?
I don't.
Executive session is not going to be a very long thing, I don't think, but...
I still think that's another one. Our agenda tonight is not that bad.
So, we can wait and do that afterwards, too.
I tell you what, everybody wants to eat. You can take your dinner with you to executive session. So, let's go ahead and go to executive session, grab your food, and then you're going to go to the big conference room. Get there quickly. Do not take 20 minutes to get there, and then we will come back. We will adjourn this in public, and we need question and answer with press in public when we come back.
Right. Do you want me to read the executive session item?
Yes.
Okay.
And then I'll take a motion to go into executive session. I'm just trying to get the plan going before we get that far, so thank you.
Executive session accordance with the following. A, Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code, real property to full discussion regarding community development block grant disaster recovery, CDBG-DR affordability period, and Section 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding CDBG-DR affordability period.
Motion to go to executive session.
Motion by Mr. Prather, seconded by Mr. Scott.
Mr. Gleason.
Gleason, all right.
Mr. Gleason, do you want me to do a roll call, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Scott.
Hi.
Mayor Houston.
Hi.
Ms. Garza. Hi. Mr. Gleason.
Hi.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Mr. Mendoza.
Hi.
And Mr. Prather.
Hi.
The motion passes seven to zero.
We'll see y'all. Leave your computer here running.